Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for December 5th, 2022. If everyone could. Thank you. Thank you for being here. We have two action items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is the Colorado School of Mines Tabor Lake Trail presentation. And item number two is Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan. Looking forward to both of those items coming before us this evening. As we do most of our meetings, I'd like to start with public comment on either of the agenda items number one or number two. And I have Susan Wood signed up to speak. So Ms. Wood, if you'd like to come to the podium and give us your first name, your last name, and spell your last name for us, and give us an address, we're excited to hear from you.
All right, very good. There's nothing like going first. I'm Susan Wood, Susan, S-U-S-A-N, last name Wood, W-O-O-D. I live at 3936 Sem Street. And I'm here tonight to speak on the affordable housing strategy that you're going to be talking about a little later on. I am a professional planner. I've been working in planning for about 25 years at this point, and I've been a resident of Wheat Ridge for about 30 years. So it's really sort of a unique combination for me. I know in the planning world, the importance of housing, the importance of affordable housing, and how it's become so much more important over the last few years across the country, particularly in Colorado, and most definitely in Wheat Ridge. So I was so glad to see this plan and to be supportive of this plan. It's really wonderful to see Wheat Ridge taking a step forward to acknowledge the changing conditions we have in our state and in our city, but also to look at issues that we need to address because of those changing conditions. Two things that I really liked the most about this plan is it addresses affordable housing from a homeownership perspective, but also from a rental perspective, which I think is huge. Homeownership has long been the cornerstone of wealth building in our country, but that's not for everyone. Not everyone can attain that. Not everyone desires to attain that. So to look at affordability from an ownership standpoint is critical, but also to look at affordability from a rental standpoint is also critical, and the plan does that. And I think that's wonderful. I have seen changes in this community in the 30 years since I've been here. The neighborhood I live in when I moved there, which was about 18 years ago, was an older population, undoubtedly. There are still older people, myself included, in the neighborhood, but I have certainly seen changes. I have a young couple across the street, a young couple next door across the street, a young couple next door. They all have small children. They fortunately could attain that level of homeownership and move into our neighborhood, but there are a lot of first-time homebuyers that can't. So putting a plan like this together is really important. The other thing I truly appreciate about this plan is the flexibility that it seems to offer. I won't pretend to be an expert in everything that's in here, but it seems to offer starting points and strategies and ways to go forward, but then acknowledges that there's a need for flexibility because conditions change, and situations change, and tools change. And so it acknowledges that as well. So with that, I'll stop and just say thank you so much. Thank you for doing this. I think staff and council have done an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to talk with us this evening. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak tonight, but if you're here in the city hall and would like to speak, you may do so now. And I'm going to, if you're online, you may also join our conversation and speak to the council for three minutes. If you'll raise your hand in the virtual format, we'll bring you into the meeting and go from there. So I'm going to check with my clerk and see if anyone has raised their hands. And I see, I don't see anyone that's raised their hands, and I don't see anyone coming forward, so we will close our citizens' right to speak, and we will go to agenda item number one, which is the Colorado School of Mines Tabor Lake Trail presentation. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a big group here this evening, but Brandon Oldberg on our staff from Parks and Rec will introduce our guest.
Thank you. I am very excited, very excited to introduce the Trail Blasters team from the Colorado School of Mines capstone program. This team has been working on this project for two full semesters since January of 2022. And I'll let them go through a presentation, but it's an assessment and planning project around Tabor Lake. Pass you the mic.
First of all, thank you, everyone, for having us here today. We're really excited to present our project. We've been working with the city of Wheat Ridge for the past two semesters to design a new trail around Tabor Lake, which is in the Wheat Ridge Green Belt Open Space Park. And currently, it's just a social trail, and it has become very dangerous for people who use it due to the erosion throughout the trail. And we have also made it a priority to make it ADA accessible.
I'm Robert Petty.
I'm Jacob Click.
I'm Grant Golevich.
I'm Marissa Shigyu.
I'm Camila Garcia-Foreya.
And my name's Valeria.
So we're pretty much done with the project. Some of the main tasks we did is land survey of the area around Tabor Lake. We also had a community input survey. As you can see, let's hold the poster up a little higher. There we go. Towards the right of the poster, we had a public engagement survey, and we ended up asking 10 questions. These are the results from just three of the questions, mainly with respect to what members of the public want to see with the trail. So this helped justify our engineering design for the project. So after completing the survey, we ended up selecting a trail concept, which we'll go into detail a little bit later with respect to the trail material, as well as some of the features. Some of the technical work we did involved multiple disciplines of civil engineering. We completed a floodplain analysis, basically proving that the construction of the trail would not have a detrimental impact to the 100-year floodplain for the, since the lake does reside within a 100-year floodplain. We also did soil testing and analysis to see what existed at the site and used this to design a retaining wall. With respect to the trail, we ended up designing the trail in Civil 3D, a civil engineering program, and followed all ADA accessible standards and followed all applicable trail design standards. We also prepared a cost estimate for the project and did a preliminary design on a retaining wall and prepared plan and profile sheets and the process of handing the project off. This right now is sort of part of that process. Next slide.
Yeah, so the concept that our team ended up going with, based off community input and surveys, was a combined trail concept. So as you can see in the picture, we designed almost 50/50 between crusher fines and concrete. This was based off of community input as well as client needs. So the Department of Parks and Recreation let us know that the community is only allowed to hike on crusher fines. There's no cyclists allowed. So taking that into consideration and also the client needs for the Van Gordon Trailhead to access, to have access down to the existing Clear Creek Trail, we went with the concrete portion on the west slope, which is beneficial because it allows all pedestrians to get from the Van Gordon Trailhead down to the existing trail. It also stabilized the west slope, which was an area of particularly bad erosion. And then we used crusher fines on the north and east side of the trail because the community let us know that they preferred crusher fines and they preferred a natural feel to be maintained on the trail.
So another design consideration that we had to choose from was a bird blind location. We ended up deciding on putting a bird blind location at the south end of the trail, right next to the existing Clear Creek Trail. This provides access from the Clear Creek Trail up to the bird blind, making it very easy for people to walk up and to be able to view the birds at the rookery since it's very, very close. So the bird blind design that we ended up going with is a bird blind that looks like this. It is very similar to the one that is already existing at the Bass Lake, which is the other lake that is very close to Tabor Lake. We decided to go with this bird blind design since it is already in use and the people seem to love it.
And then in addition, while we were land surveying out around the lake, we noticed lots of people using particularly this small access point. And then also with the community survey that we conducted, we realized that lots of the community wanted another amenity added to the trail, which was a lake access point. And therefore, we decided to add a lake access point to the west side of the trail. And as you can tell by the middle of the picture, the access point is already kind of like eroded to the lake surface, noting therefore suggesting that people already use it continually. And so therefore, we wanted to make it more accessible to everybody, and that's why, next slide please. We decided to go with this concept design for our access point. Basically, it's going to be a 200-foot-long ramp leading down to a wooden dock. All of it will be covered with rails to prevent people from falling in and also to prevent people from using any boats or kayaks to access the lake. The picture kind of shows like there's like a sharp dip for the leading down to the ramp, but this won't actually be true. This was just in creating the picture, but it'll be much more of a steady decline so people with wheelchairs can access this lake access point.
Yeah, so one of the concerns that our team had was the soil conditions. So we conducted a full geotechnical investigation of the area. We performed soil testing in these locations to determine the onsite soils that we were dealing with. Once that was done, we moved forward with using the least desirable soil in designing all geotechnical features to result in the most conservative design. Next slide, please. So we decided on a retaining wall that would be implemented in the west slope where the erosion is pretty bad. So we came up with, we used the Jefferson County code for retaining wall designs and came up with two different designs. We used MSC walls for both designs as gravity walls were not sufficient enough to hold back the slope on the west side. So these retaining walls will, both retaining walls would have the ability to stabilize the slope and also adhere to all codes and regulations for Jefferson County.
So then we used AutoCAD or computer-aided design to be able to design our trail. We used our survey that we conducted on the field to be able to make an existing topography. And then with that, we were able to create a vertical and horizontal alignment around the, around the lake. And then we were also able to make a designer retaining wall within this file also. And everything is done that we set out to do. And you can see, this is just like, you can see the existing topography, and the proposed is the darker lines. And the parts where they're jut out a little bit is where the retaining wall would go so as to not allow soil to have to be filled into the lake. And so, yes.
So kind of going into more detail with respect to the floodplain analysis that went into the project, we had multiple parts. We started out early on in the process. We completed runoff calculations using Jefferson County criteria. Essentially, what we did here is we determined how much water runoff would result as a result of, for conservative estimate, adding a concrete trail around the entire lake, even though it's only around about half the lake. And we ultimately determined that the runoff would not be a significant impact. We also looked into the requirements for a Section 404 permit, which basically is with the Army Corps. And with the Section 404, you have to prove that with waterways, you're not having an adverse impact. And since Clear Creek is a waterway that's, you know, a federal waterway, that was a consideration. Also, the earthwork is considered ultimately with the site. We designed it such that the earthwork would be balanced, where there wouldn't be fill added to the site, which would, you know, reduce the need for a 404 permit. We also spoke with the Army Corps of Engineers, and they indicated that as long as construction work remains away from Clear Creek and does not have any impact on Clear Creek, then Section 404 permit would not be required, which we consider that a very important factor since that would add time, money, and scope to the project. We also looked at the 100-year flood elevation data with the Mile High Flood District and determined that the proposed design will be well above the flood level within a 100-year storm. Next slide.
And so for our cost estimate, we came to a number that was around $325,000. This does not include an engineering fee since this was our project. We went ahead and designed it and engineered it for y'all. This also does not include a maintenance fee, but this price does include the materials and the cost of construction for our entire scope of the project. So for all the areas that are concrete, crusher fines, the ramp going down to the dock, everything within that range, and then it also includes cut and fill, all of the excavation work, signage, and everything like that.
And so now that we've finished these parts of our project, our next steps are basically handing off the project to the client, which is the city of Wheat Ridge. And so we're compiling a flash drive to have all of the data, everything that we gathered online, all the observations, everything that we did on AutoCAD into that flash drive, and then we'll be handing it over to Brandon, who will then use it and give it to the engineers after this project is put out to bid. Then we'll also begin the process, or we hope that after we hand off the project to the city of Wheat Ridge, that the city will begin the process of securing funding for the project, which we realized that the city has already secured funding for it. So we're really excited that this project is hopefully going to actually happen.
And I did want to clarify, in communication with Brandon regarding the computer hacks, since there's a preference not to have flash drives in the city, I did send the files over via cloud-based solutions, so there'd be no concerns with that. I just did, I want to make that clear real quick.
So as Camila basically just went over the next steps, here's the schedule, which lists what she just went over. And the last part of it is that we hope to eventually be able to go back to this trail and walk on it and ride our bikes on it. And yeah. Next slide. Thank you so much for being here again.
My name was on that, so. Thank you all for listening. If time allows, we are open to questions, if anyone has any.
Questions from, questions from council? Yeah, absolutely. Questions from council? Councilperson Olms.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, everybody. That was a really nice job. I really liked the concept of having the crusher fines on the east and the concrete on the west and having two different areas. Did you, one thing that I saw on the cost estimate was the signage. Did you, was that going to be some, was that just kind of a rough idea, or did you have any ideas as far as like educational signage?
No, we just had like speed limits, areas where, say, like you can't be on crusher fines, type of signs like that, nothing with questions.
Okay. And then on the, on the bird blind, I thought that was a, I think it's a really good idea to keep that on the south side. I think if it was on the north or somewhere over there, it might, it just, I feel like it wouldn't be a safe site, and it would provide much better access on the south. So I think that that's a great idea. Was there any consideration about putting in areas for like benches?
We did, the times we met with our client, we did talk about it. And overall, we just thought that we would just place them where, where they would feel that it is better. We didn't, but we didn't really decide on a specific location with our design. So it's pretty open-ended in that aspect.
Okay. And then was there any, when you, did you talk to the public? And if so, was there any, I don't know if you guys have been up to Crown Hill, if there's like a nesting area that gets closed off seasonally? Was there any conversation about seasonally closing off like that east side where the crusher fines are for bird nesting?
In regards to the community, with our community survey, we were able to gain over 160 responses to the survey. And one of the primary groups that we looked at was bird watchers. So we placed a survey in a bird watchers Facebook forum. So they were like one of our primary targets. And then in regards to the seasonal access, we didn't look at specifically closing down the trail on the east side during the season, depending if the birds are mating or not. But we definitely took into consideration that while we're constructing the trail, we have to be very careful at the times of your, when you're constructing the trail to make sure that it's not hindering the birds mating season.
Thank you, everybody.
Additional questions? Councilwoman Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, you guys, for this work. It's a lot of work, and I'm very excited to see your end project. I just wanted to ask a couple of quick questions. So on the east side where it's crusher fines, is that more of like a single-track width or is that like a double-track kind of width?
It's six feet wide.
Okay. And then is it wider then on the west side where the concrete is?
It's actually narrower. The west side is going to be 10.
Okay.
And crusher fines is six.
Okay, great. And then on the, the bird blind, that's on the site, so that's ADA accessible? Is that, is that right?
Yes. So we're making the entire trail hopefully ADA accessible. And so we made sure that it will be next to the existing Clear Creek Trail. And since that's already like ADA accessible, it can lead to like people with wheelchairs easily accessing the bird blind.
And then what is, what are your next steps then for your project? And now that you've done your presentation here, where do you guys go next with your project?
So this is really the end of it for us. We're all actually graduating in a couple, couple days, so.
Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, guys. That was really, first of all, it was a great presentation, and this is an exciting project. I moved to Wheat Ridge because of the Clear Creek Trail, and so any investments in improving it really are close to my heart. I'm curious a little bit about your survey and your public engagement because the outputs of a project are really as good as their inputs. And so can someone speak to how you came up with the survey questions? You already spoke a little bit to how you were disseminating the survey, but I'm just, would like to hear a little bit more about how you went about the survey and then how you went about using that data to inform, inform your design.
Yeah, so the survey questions were based largely off of a meeting with the client, kind of figuring out what they wanted and what they think that the public would want. We took that information and we created our survey. We asked 10 questions. We only have three on this poster. Thank you. So we kind of just did it based off of client needs. And then for the distribution of the survey, we distributed it amongst Facebook groups, like we mentioned, and we also tabled right outside on the existing Clear Creek Trail back in March, I believe. February or March, we went out to the lake and set up and talked to, you know, trail users as they walked by or biked by to kind of come up with information for our design. And so we based our design mostly off of client needs, but also as much as we could, what the public would want out of this trail as well.
We also realized that it would have been very helpful, you know, if we had more time to do more survey questions. Even the time we were out there, it was colder weather, so there weren't a lot of people fishing, which was one of our questions. There weren't people boating, which was another one of our questions. And with the boating aspect, it's better since the rookery is in that lake, so we want to avoid people going in there. But definitely, as many responses as we got, it could have been, we could have gotten a lot more if we did it at a different time in the year.
Thank you. I've got to say, actually, over 100 responses is actually pretty good. So, yeah, you guys should feel really good about that. And then my second sort of technical question is, so I think you probably saw, I'm a bike rider, and so I am really excited to see that that, is that paved path going to actually connect with the road there?
Yeah, so this is Van Gordon, and over here is like 44th. So it will allow for bikers to go in through here and access Clear Creek, but it'll make it more convenient as well. There's the other, there's another entrance that bikers can access through over here, but you know, you would have to go all the way over here, and this will, this will be really convenient.
Yeah, I'm really excited because Van Gordon connects with what I think is not entirely a very safe rapid flashing beacon crossing there, but that isn't much, as someone who rides their bike to long shots because they have really good Vietnamese pho for lunch, I'm really excited to see that connection there. That is much, much safer than what's currently available. So I just want to call out that you're not only creating like a beautiful and accessible trail around the lake, but creating great connectivity to our local businesses. And then I hope as the city will look at signage on 44th directing people to that trail access. So I cannot wait for this to get done, and I hope some of you stick around close enough to see it. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you guys did a fantastic job. What I really like about it is it seems like you used some of the existing, kind of what people were already doing in your engineering. So where they're going down to water level already and where people are kind of already observing the birds and things like that. So that's, I think sometimes you can over-engineer something, but you know, where people kind of naturally go seems like to make sense. And I appreciate too, kind of like Councilwoman Holtein said, being able to access from 44th rather than needing to go all the way around because that can be kind of a dangerous off the streets there. So again, I don't have very many questions. I think they've all been asked, but I think you guys did a phenomenal job, and I do hope you guys will stick around in the community and be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Weaver.
I also just wanted to thank you all for your work. This is just an amazing amount of hours and time, and congratulations, and congratulations on your graduation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions online, did you think, or? Didn't see anybody?
But Brandon will, before we wrap up.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. You guys are some of the greatest consultants we've had. Thank you very much.
Very cost-effective, too. I actually had a couple of questions. Your geotechnical investigation, did it uncover any problematic soils, expansive or cobble or hard rock?
No, most of the soil was sand, or comprised mainly of sand. Tabor Lake, prior to being filled, was a quarry. So we did run into gravels a lot whenever we were testing soils. But for the purposes of design, we would, you know, sieve those out to use mainly the sands, the sandier soils. But no problematic soils were found onsite.
Great. And I had another question. Does your cross slope at the, at the concrete trail slope to the lake or away from the lake?
Do you mean at the, at the access point or where? The grady?
Yeah, the cross slope.
Yeah, it goes into, to the lake.
Goes towards the lake?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions?
Looks like Val, Val can answer. Did you have a question or a comment?
I just basically wanted to echo the exact same thing that Councilmember Hutchinson said, that this is great, and it's so awesome to have this great team all working on this with these different perspectives. Just so many aspects of the project were thought about, so I'm so appreciative. Even though I'm joining remote tonight, I just wanted to make sure that y'all knew that, I really appreciate your hard work, and congratulations on your coming-up graduation date.
Thank you.
I wanted to tell you that one of the, you gave this presentation to the Golden City Council, and I had an email from one of the councilors over there telling me that he knew you were coming here and that you was very. and that he was very impressed with your presentation. I certainly concur. Thank you, thank you for what you've done and for being here with us tonight. And.
I think Brandon wants to, yeah, next steps?
Yeah, again, just a big thank you to this team that worked for a full year on this project. Amazing resource for the city and the department and just great job. And next steps will be to put this out to bid to a professional design firm that will do the professional stamped engineered plans, hopefully with minimal changes. You know, you all are engineers in a month or so. So again, congratulations on that. And then after the design is done, we would put out to bid for a construction firm to actually complete the project. And council did previously earmark ARPA funds for this project. And we also recently got some Jeffco Open Space Trails grant funding as well. So hopefully we're able to fully fund it, design and construction all the way through, so.
Any further questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tim Stites.
Brandon, just a quick question on that. Their estimate was about $300 and some thousand dollars. In your experience, does that seem like that's going to be about?
JR Engineering was a technical advisor to the team. Their estimate was a bit higher. So we'll see what it comes down to with the design and then the construction. But ARPA funds were about $840,000 for this project. And we got another $400,000 from Jeffco Open Space. So certainly hoping that's going to be enough. But with the earthwork and things, we'll see what the final total comes to once we do the design, so.
Okay. Well, we've got some strong bodies up here in case we fall short. We'll give you all the call. All right, well, listen, thank you very much. One more round of applause. Great presentation. Thank you. Thank you for your patience while we set up the, the new, the new team to go to our second item on the agenda tonight. This is the Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very excited to bring this to you this evening, as you heard from the previous speaker, who's, I think, still here, how important this is in Wheat Ridge and in Colorado, in the country. And it's, it's, there's no silver bullets. Eric and I were talking earlier, there's no silver bullets to this. But I think they put together a really good plan and some great recommendations. So we have our, our team here. Jeff Hurt and Lauren Mikulak and Mary Ann Schilling in the back, who all worked on this project. Jeff or Lauren, you want to kick it off and introduce our team?
Sure, yeah, I'll be brief. So Jeff Hurt was sort of the city project manager. And Lauren Mikulak, obviously, in CZB. Eric Amies here and he has a couple of members of his team. I think, just real brief, we're excited to share this with you all tonight, this strategy and get your feedback. If you recall back in August, we had sort of an extended study session where we did a pretty deep dive on a lot of these things. And I think we, I speak for the whole project team in saying that we really appreciated the really direct feedback, direct, helpful, thoughtful feedback at that meeting. We really took it to heart and put a lot of energy into doing our best to incorporate that feedback into this document. So hopefully you see that tonight as we're going through the presentation and in the strategy itself. So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric to kind of walk us through things.
Thanks, Jeff. Just want to start by saying that's a hard act to follow. And it's a reminder of how much time I was wasting when I was 22. But luckily, I'm not 22 anymore. Thanks for having us back. It's good to be here. Nice to see everybody. We are excited to talk about two topics that are close to our heart, Wheat Ridge and affordable housing. And even though our colleague Charles cannot be with us today, he sends his regards and his regrets. I am joined by Thomas Eddington, whom I think you all know. You've seen us a handful of times already. So we're going to run through the, basically, we're going to just run through the strategy document tonight. Try to do so in brief. Not going to force a show of hands to see who's actually read it and who's not. But hint, hint, there is an executive summary in the first couple of pages. Certainly, there's a lot to get through here if we were to do all of it. We're going to go through, the document is basically broken into three main parts. The first part is the market conditions and needs assessment. It's a lot of the data stuff. We've sort of been through that already. There are new things in here maybe that you haven't all seen. But we did do a bit of that back in May. We did, I think, a bit of it at the study session in August. For anybody who was at the open house or who's reviewed those materials, I think a lot of that stuff has been gone over with this group. That doesn't mean you can't stop and ask questions about it. Certainly, we can. Anything in this document is fair game to talk about tonight. But we just, we're going to do a sort of a quick hitter on that tonight and focus more on the stuff that's new. Let's see. Want to say that this is a draft. This document is, it's, you know, we think it's pretty solid. But it is a draft. It is not in concrete. It is, probably has an odd, you know, thing to touch up here and there, some typo that somebody missed somewhere. Although your staff team are very, very good and I would say thorough editors is how I will describe their contributions. So hopefully, we've done okay in that regard. But it's not in concrete. More important than any of that, it's malleable based on this conversation. So, you know, we always want to, when we do our work, we don't want people later on to say, oh, that CZB report from whenever. We want this to feel like it is Wheat Ridge's document, like it's a document that council feels ownership over, that staff feels ownership over, and that the community, for those who care about this topic, feel ownership over. So your feedback, your contributions are all really important to, to getting there. That's the most important reason why this is a draft. And then, of course, we'll do questions and discussion. What's not in there is we also have just a little bit of information about next steps as well. These are the questions that were in the staff memo, I believe. And just basically, I'll run through these really quick. Does council agree with recommended policies and principles set forth in Part Two? We'll talk about those tonight. Are there any tools that are missing from Part Three? So we, we covered a lot of tools, specifically the tools that were listed in House Bill 211271. But there are also a couple of other things that we added as well for consideration. Those are in the appendix. But the question is, is there anything in there that you thought you were going to see or learn about that ended up being missing? So if there is, you know, we can talk about that. Questions about the recommended action items? And is there anything else that council feels it needs to, to know about or hear about before this eventually ends up in an adoption vote sometime earlier in the, in the new year? So those are the questions that we'll, want to make sure we get answered before the night is over. And also, just the standard caveat, I could, I could talk this whole time and I could run through all these slides and you could just sit here and listen to me and that would be fine if that's what you want to do. But certainly, don't be afraid to interrupt and ask a question because that's what we're here for. And if you get ahead of something, I'll let you know that and we'll get to it when it's time. But into the, the heart of the matter here, this is just some important context and a bit of refresher, a bit of a grab bag here of some things that we wanted to make sure we hit before we got into the document. So first is the why of this all. Why affordable housing matters? We tried to convey that through the document and especially right up front in the introduction. But the data show that housing costs have risen to a level that excludes a large proportion, a large proportion of current and future households. Simple fact of the matter is that as the housing market has strengthened here, the number of households that can access it has shrunk. That's more true on the ownership side than it is on the rental side. But as that happens, what Wheat Ridge could lose potentially are those households that have, you know, important connections to the community, whether they're people who grew up here, who can't afford to sort of put down new roots because they can't buy here anymore, or folks who work here, who are important to the community, who cannot live here as well. So I want to make sure that that's reiterated. Refresher on affordability, oh, sorry. And another important thing there is just sort of asking the question, what kind of community does Wheat Ridge want to be? And that is a sort of big existential question. And to some extent, will, is a comprehensive plan type question. But it's worth raising here in this context because, you know, who can afford to be here really shapes who the community becomes over time. And if, you know, the aspirations that the community has, to be diverse, to have different kinds of households be able to live here, this is another reason why it's really important that we take on this topic. The affordability metric, again, housing is affordable when it costs less than 30% of gross household income. The way we convert that, and that's easy on the rent side because you have a monthly income and a monthly rent and you can do that calculation quite easily. Not as easy on the ownership side, but as a shorthand, shortcut, just think of it as three and a half times the annual household income. So $100,000 should be able to afford a $350,000 house, for example. And again, talking about the importance of previous council feedback, I think Jeff covered that. But I just want to reiterate that that's really important to us. The time that you all gave back in August, that was really important. And even though, yes, we are your consultants, we bring outside expertise and experience and objectivity and all that, again, it's really important that this is your strategy at the end of the day, not ours. So we appreciate the feedback. We use the feedback. We're not just checking a box. And with all that said, again, this is quick. We've covered a lot of this before, so we're just going to, we have this at a very summary level. Again, if you've got, you know, specific questions about anything you read about in, in the document, just stop me and throw a question to me or to Thomas. Again, on the ownership side, we're doing this on ownership and renter. That's how we split this. On the ownership side, a few key things to keep in mind. Single unit detached house, the median sale price for 2021 was $580,000. That's about three quarters of, and, and single unit detached houses are about three quarters of the sales in any given year with the balance being condos or townhouses. But that's the vast majority, as you would probably expect. And generally speaking, households with incomes, annual incomes less than $150,000 are going to have some kind of struggles to buy, to own in Wheat Ridge. And that is contrasted with the 2020 median owner household income in Wheat Ridge was about $90,000. So if you think about, you know, basically now, that number's basically now. Your median owner household has an income, household income, not a single person, but the whole household, the median's about $90,000. And your new buyers really have to be at about $150,000. So that's a pretty dramatic difference. On the renter side, the city has seen an influx of new product in recent years, which is, you know, positive in and of itself. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. But market rates for new units are not really affordable to households with incomes less than $75,000. And you can contrast that with the current, or the 2020 median renter household income of about $42,000. So that's a pretty big gap. So the new stuff is not really affordable to most Wheat Ridge renters today. Our analysis shows that Wheat Ridge has a lot of what we call naturally occurring, what's, we don't call it. It's called, in the field, naturally occurring affordable housing, NOAH, or NOAA, which is a good thing and that's actually an opportunity we'll talk about later. Because they tend to be aging rental units, tend to have more affordable rents. And that can help your, your renter population when it comes to affordability. The reality is, as you might expect from that renter, median renter household income of $42,000, generally speaking, Wheat Ridge renters have lower incomes than you'll find across the region. And so as a result, their cost burden rates are pretty high. The cost burden being, are you facing an affordability challenge? Are you spending more, 30% or more of your income on rent? And Wheat Ridge, those rates are fairly high. A few specific populations to consider, as, as, you know, it's called out in this document and is important, as the city continues down this path, there are nearly 4,000 renter households with incomes below $50,000. And $50,000 is sort of a cutoff. It's, it's a generalized cutoff. Whether it's 52 or 48 is sort of immaterial, but it's a nice round number to wrap your head around. Basically, the way that rents are trending, the way they've increased in recent years, means that, and the affordability associated with rents, those rents, means that we assess that basically any renter household that has an income below $50,000 is at risk. It could be, that risk could be defined differently. It could be simply rent going up faster than incomes are going up. And then there's a better chance that you're going to face a cost burden at some point sooner than later. It could be at the lower end of the income scale, something that's more acute, more problematic, where it's just, you know, just as that tipping point to not being able to afford a place at all, not being able to find a place at all, facing displacement potentially. Again, about nearly 4,000 renter households are potentially in that situation in Wheat Ridge today. There are over 9,000 jobs paying $40,000 or less in Wheat Ridge as of 2019. That's the most recent data we have at that level of granularity. So again, even if, you know, certainly a single earner at that income is going to struggle, given what I just said about renter households. And even if you put two together, if we assume, you know, two $40,000 a year people are either roommates or partners, they may sort of beat the rent problem, but they still won't be buyers. So that's a population to think about as well. And then there's some data on this in the report, more specific figures, but single income households that span the elderly, working age singles living alone or single parents and especially the, uh, single parent households that are female-headed. There's kind of a lot going on in this slide, but I'll just hit some high points here. This is one way to think about categorizing housing needs. And then there is a couple of pages that do this in more detail in the report itself. But essentially, it's calling out here where the different kinds of challenges really exist. So because ownership is not generally an option at the lower end of the spectrum, those less than $50,000 households or the 50 to 75 households, you don't, even a little bit higher than that, generally, we kind of don't worry so much about the inability to buy, but rather what the rent challenges are there. And again, for those folks, households $50,000 or less, you know, it's, it's quite a struggle. It's also, again, those, even though they're, the households that are between 50 and 75, they're not the most at risk, they also could be at risk as rents continue to rise. So that drives one of the opportunities and some of the action items that we'll talk about in a few minutes. And then as we go up to the, more of the six-figure households, rent, you know, renting is not really a challenge at that level, at that level of income. But again, as the ownership market has strengthened, as home prices have, and values have risen, buying becomes a challenge. And then generally speaking, again, we assess that for households at $150,000 or higher, they don't really have too many concerns in the Wheat Ridge market. They can rent comfortably. They can mostly have good options to buy. So it's those four categories from, on the, the most left four categories that we need to be thinking about.
Can I just ask a quick question here?
Sure.
So when I was reading this in the, the report, what, what connected to me, and I just wanted to, to see if this is, if I'm kind of thinking the right way. But, you know, in the, in the first, you know, less than $50,000 range, like I thought about our community and where are our opportunities there? And then the Lutheran Legacy Campus was kind of one of the only opportunities I could think of. Or also, we own that bank. We own a bank now, so. Yeah, a bank building. And then in the next level of the 50 to the 74, 999, that's where I was thinking, okay, our opportunities there are the, like, reinvestment opportunities, reinvesting it into what we currently have. And then at the 75 to the 100,000, that was where, when you talked later on in here about like the, the mixed-use zoning. like, the mixed-use zoning and like the, the more large-type complexes, but I was trying to think about where would we really even have those opportunities, like the TOD maybe for some mixed-use zoning, but like the large complex opportunities, I mean, we're really running out of land in Wheat Ridge, and so I wasn't really, I couldn't really think of maybe Lutheran Legacy Campus, but, so that's kind of how I connected that. And then the 100,000 and up, I was thinking, single family attached is what, what kind of connects to that, and then beyond that was like kind of single family detached. Is that, was I thinking like along the right lines, was I connecting those in the right categories?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, if that's what you took away, then we did it right. I would add a couple of things. One is that it, while we think that the NOAA opportunities, the reinvestment opportunities, given the economics of that, given the likely current rents, given future, what we want the rents to be, you know, as time goes on, and as we, you know, maybe invest in those properties, that that 50 to 75 may be the heart of it, I, we certainly would not say that that excludes a lower income level from that. It's a challenge, I think we tried to explain in, in the document, in that very beginning of part three a little bit, it's just the, the gap between what the households below 50 can pay and what it costs to build housing, or even preserve housing, is, is large. So that per-unit gap is pretty substantial. And so our general thinking there was to say, you know, where the city has an opportunity to, you know, impact it directly, like in the NOAA program, if there can be places where those rents can be facilitated, even understanding that that might be a little bit more expensive than for rehabbing a unit for somebody at $68,000, at $38,000, it's naturally going to cost more, but also that those incomes really demand a level of subsidy that comes from other places. Deep, deep levels of subsidy, like low-income housing tax credits, generally is more in the purview of real affordable housing providers, housing authorities, that kind of thing. It's, the, the city itself probably is not going to play deeply in that space. Doesn't mean the city doesn't have a role to play in supporting projects that can leverage those subsidy sources, but it would be the place where you'd sort of be more in a supportive role, more of a responsive role, trying to figure out, okay, when those projects become available, because they're being pursued by others, how do we contribute to that, right? In a variety of ways.
So kind of along those lines of thoughts of using like the reinvestment into that, that lower level, do you feel like a strategy of reinvesting, but then saying, well, no, because housing vouchers have to be accepted, like, you can't not accept housing vouchers, right? So that wouldn't even be a, okay, sorry, never mind. Brainstorm.
We, it's, I don't want to say dispiriting, but the numbers that we've been looking, we were looking at when we started this project, and the numbers we're looking at today when it comes to labor and materials, those kinds of costs, interest rates, right, financing costs, it's pretty, just looking at sort of what it takes to, to put an average two-bedroom rental unit into, into operation, it's grown even this year, and certainly, it's grown since past years. It's just become very, very expensive to build housing. And so this is something that we're kind of, we don't know what conditions are going to be, we don't know if, you know, there's changes to labor costs, we don't know if interest rates are going to fall at some point, so it's hard to say. But one thing I think we can be sure of is that it, housing costs, the costs that contribute to housing costs are not likely to fall off so dramatically that all of a sudden, we're going to get this like big sense of relief. So I think that probably something you can take to the bank in, in this report, in the way of thinking that's, that's in here, is that you're going to have to continue to have big amounts of subsidy for those populations, that it's going to flow probably through others, not through the city directly. Again, but I, I really appreciate what the speaker said, the public comment at the beginning, which is, this is designed to sort of give you some rules of the road, to give you direction, and to give you the flexibility, you know, not tie your hands with very highly specific things. It should sort of age well, is what we're hoping for, right? Time will tell, but that's what we're hoping for. Actually, I think you had one more comment about lack of land, and I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but there, if it wasn't clear in the report, we can talk about it when we get there, but we think, number one, you're, I mean, you're, overall, you're right, it's just it is what it is. Wheat Ridge is land constrained, and there are some sites now that may be opportunities in the nearer term, because they might allow for that type, you know, the multi-unit complexes. Certainly, as you look ahead to the future, there are two things to think about, one is, yes, Lutheran, another is to have, are there opportunities in Wheat Ridge to simply create more spots of the kind where that type has been successful in the past? So we'll talk a bit more about that. You know, we have a framework now for kind of what's possible, and that may not be written totally in stone, right? Okay. Thanks for your questions, though, that's all great. Part two, this is policies and principles to guide housing actions. This is kind of, I guess, what I'll call connective tissue, and there's some why in here, there's some how in here. A lot of the purpose of these couple of pages is helping to establish a rational basis for taking action. And we want to admit at the outset that these are recommended, we came up with these, we wrote these. This project, as you know, didn't have tons of, you know, broad public input in it, it was seen as more of a technical exercise, but we thought that there, it was probably worth trying to weave together what we think we know about what Wheat Ridge is trying to accomplish, in order to, you know, sort of write these things down, and have council look at them and say, yeah, we think that looks like what we're trying to do, or, you know, it missed the mark, but whatever it is, you are not super far away from updating the comprehensive plan, but you are some distance from updating the comprehensive plan. And that's a place where you really get a chance to write down, here's what we're trying to accomplish, here's our vision, here's the, are the policies that we're going to follow as we make decisions, and then that kind of lines up with all the implementation steps that come after that, including but not limiting to updating zoning and land use regulations. So because that's a ways out, we thought, what's an interim step that might make sense, and we thought would be reasonable? So that's how these got here. And I'm just going to run through these kind of quickly to give you our thinking on, I don't have the nice version, I gave it away. Right? So again, these, these policies are meant to sort of, again, set down a basis for if you, you know, how you move forward, if you move forward ahead of the comp plan. And the first one is the full housing ladder, that basically the city recognizes that diversity of households is important, and that there needs to be a range of options as you, you know, move through your life. Second is economic and income diversity, that what we don't want are monocultures that lead to household monocultures, income monocultures, economic monocultures, so that sort of, we can only have places where certain kinds of people and kinds of households live. Another is housing type diversity, that enables both of the things that we just talked about. Another is material support for affordable housing, so back to the conversation we just had a minute ago, about the city recognizing that those kinds of housing types that the city can't necessarily impact directly are very important when it comes to implementing the strategy and meeting affordable housing goals, and that, assuming that projects are going to meet various criteria that the city could, might lay out, that the city is, you know, able and willing to provide material support to those projects. And then lastly, incentives conditioned on inclusionary outcomes. Given how deeply the city has been involved in a very positive way to facilitate a lot of, a lot of, if not all of, the most recent important projects in Wheat Ridge, and given the strength of the market, and given the goals that the city has on these topics, we thought it made sense to basically say, all right, look, now, from this point, if council adopts this document and adopts these policies as they're written, that going forward, if projects want to access city incentives, that part of the give in those projects will be some measure of affordability. That would represent, you know, a fairly important policy shift in a positive direction, we think.
Can you answer your question?
Sure.
When we talk about cash in lieu of providing affordable housing, does the amount of cash, does it allow us to build affordable housing? Does it allow us to subsidize that in a, in sort of an equal way as to having an affordable housing unit in a particular locale?
The short answer is probably, it depends on how, where, and so, Mayor, if I can just, I think what you're getting at is, most inclusionary housing regimes, there's a cash-in-lie option, so that an alternative means of compliance is if you either feel you cannot or do not want to provide an affordable unit when you're required to, that you can pay cash-in-lie or fee-in-lie, as it's sometimes called. And generally, what happens is that that money comes in, it goes into a fund somewhere, and then is redeployed for affordable housing activities elsewhere. Very common method, used successfully in a lot of places, and the, the extent to which that really gives you the right bang for the buck depends on how that fee-in-lie is set. So if it's set, and it, so much of that work is calibration, and it shouldn't sort of be a set-it-and-forget-it approach, because as conditions change, the decisions that a developer will make about whether to pay fee-in-lie, or whether to build a unit, will also change. So if it is set, sort of, to what I'll call too low, then they'll always pay it, right? When they look at their pro forma, they'll say, there's some set of calculations that says I should build the unit, or I should pay the fee-in-lie, if the fee-in-lie kind of falls below that line, then, you know, that money will come in the door. It may often be the case, in that, in that kind of situation, that the fee-in-lie for that unit may not be a one-for-one ability to sort of, you know, pay for the next unit somewhere else, for a variety of reasons. So that would require kind of a lot of thought about whether to sort of bias building the unit, or bias collecting the money, different municipalities think about that in different ways, depending on what they're trying to do. Some like the units, some really like the cash, because the cash, as you all know, is flexible, and you can use it in a lot of different ways. Hopefully, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Principles, principles are not quite policies, policies are a bit more, bit more, I guess, to some extent, high level, to some extent, vision-oriented. Principles are more about kind of, how do we do this? Or what are the rules of the road, right? So they're especially helpful when it's not exactly clear what you're supposed to do. So as conditions change, these are things that should be your decision-making filters at all times. But, so they sort of help guide how you make decisions, how you make investments, how you design programs, how you determine land use decisions, you know, those kinds of things, they can be helpful in that regard. And just quickly, the first one is be action-oriented and embrace incremental progress. So there are two ideas here. One is do something, you know, don't freeze, don't get analysis paralysis, don't be afraid to do something, but also don't be afraid to accept incremental progress. As Patrick said, there's no silver bullet, we didn't get here quickly, we're not going to get out of this quickly, doing a little bit is better than doing nothing. So rather than waiting for a home run, you know, singles and doubles are really, really good in this work. Second is aim for mixed-income outcomes. So again, reflecting the policy we talked about a minute ago, around economic segregation and how we're trying, seeking to avoid that, we want a mix, we don't want a monoculture. So where we can get mixed-income outcomes, that's what we're looking for. Not an entire apartment building that has all the same rents, all the same, affordable to all the same incomes, same when it comes to building ownership product, right? Pursue geographic dispersion, we don't want to concentrate all of anything anywhere to the extent that we don't have to. And so we like to spread affordable housing opportunities across the community. Wheat Ridge is a varied place with a lot of different kinds of neighborhoods and sub-areas, sub-communities, and everybody's got a role to play. This is an important one, get the right project in the right place. So just as we, sorry, go ahead, Scott.
So for, I, I agree with the pursue geographic dispersion, it's to the point where sometimes economics determine your mobility, and so sometimes, you know, putting these types of products next to areas that say have light rail or bicycle paths may make a little more sense than somewhere else.
Yes, absolutely. I think that's a segue to the next one, which is get the right project in the right place. So there will be, you know, certain kinds of projects will be great fits for other, certain places, and they won't be great fits for other places. And a lot of what that actually means, how you actually operationalize that, again, will be sort of planning-level conversations in the comp plan, and future small-area planning and coding efforts, but generally speaking, it's, it's not enough to just say, if I have an affordable housing project and the city wants affordable housing, it can go wherever I want it to go. We would say, that's a pretty simplistic way to look at, you know, planning and affordable housing. There will be certain projects that are great fits at the TOD, but you, and you wouldn't put that project at, I don't know, 32nd and Wadsworth for some, you know, for some other reason. There may be projects that are a great project, but they're, if they're not sort of calibrated to the context into which they are proposed to go, and they're just not going to fit, they're not going to work. And that could be everything from scale to architecture to, you know, traffic, you know, all kinds of things that, that you and the planning commission and others have to consider all the time, you know, that doesn't stop because it's an affordable housing project. So get the right project in the right place. The next one is support other housing developers when possible and lead when necessary. Again, two ideas here, back to the, some of the questions that Councilman Dr. Hobbie was asking a few minutes ago. You want to make sure that Wheat Ridge is open for business when it comes to those kinds of projects, that the city's never going to do itself, but you also, and you want to make sure that you sort of have those guidelines laid out, understand, you know, what are our, what are our policies and our principles for participation in those kinds of projects, but also that there will be other times when the city has an opportunity to do things and lead in ways that no one else can do. And there are a variety of those, we'll talk about in a little bit in the action items.
So I have a question kind of that fits across a couple of those, so if we're, let's just use the Lutheran example, and we are really recognizing that this is this unique opportunity that actually hits a couple of the different recommendations in here. And I'm not sure the answer falls in like the action plan that we're adopting, but like, can you speak a little bit to that balance between, we were setting forth its, its principles and its toolkits, and having some policies in place against the flexibility of, like, ingenuity of, of developers and different solutions that might be coming forward from like the private sector, like what that interfaces between not being, like, being clear but not overly prescriptive?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So can you kind of speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, it's a great question. Again, back to the, just the plain reality that the city itself's not going to build affordable housing, and, or any housing at all, and that this mostly is going to be done by others, and what we anticipate is in large measure that the private sector is going to be making proposals. And we, we think that you don't want to say, setting certain expectations is good, and parameters is good, but you do want to give yourself, and you do want to give the private sector flexibility to look at a site and look at the regulations around that, and at a certain point, hopefully, you know, all the regulations sort of handshake with this kind of document and other planning documents that the city has, and have the private sector be able to say, okay, I understand what the city is trying to do, I understand what we're required to do under the law, and those two things being acknowledged, I have a lot of different sort of ways that I could make that work, right? And again, because we don't know what the future looks like. So what we know, just for example, we know that rental development of the past three, five, seven years looks like the Edison, looks like, you know, West 38, looks like Parallel Project. But we don't know if that's going to be the case in five years, or 10 more years, right? But hopefully, like, these kinds of policy statements and the regulatory changes that we're talking about should hold up, right? Does that, get it what you're talking about? Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. We don't know, we don't build housing. We're not, you know, developers, or builders, or architects, right?
Well, and we just saw, yeah, we just saw a presentation, the mayor and Mr. Ohm, was at the Commissioner's Breakfast the other morning, and CU is doing a study on affordability in the state right now, and a big point they made was, single-family home developers are still building homes for five, six, four, five, six, seven, eight-sized families, and they're not building for the ones, or twos, or threes, and they haven't gotten the message yet. So I think that kind of goes to Rachel's comment about, you know, what is, what's the development community thinking based on, you know, compared to what we actually need today? So I thought it was an interesting point, that I think there's right, that was, did I say that right?
Just disconnect.
There's that disconnect there, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't done, we have not done the analysis here, but we have done it in another metro community. And the most frequently occurring household size in single-family houses in that community is two, right? So, and I'm sure there's some, something similar in Wheat Ridge as well, given the demographics. It's very difficult to think about how to match household size to unit type, because what it's driven by is less by the size of the household, and more by the income of the household. So people, Thomas is probably sick of hearing me say this, but there, I live in a relatively new-build community in Boulder County, and these big four-bedroom houses, and so many of them are baby boomers living alone.
Yeah.
Because they sold out of Boulder, and they took their equity, and they went to Lafayette, and they could have a big house, and I guess they wanted a big house. So not everyone's downsizing.
Can I just ask real fast, before we move into, I see that your next slide's part three?
I haven't done my last principle yet.
Oh, sorry. Go for it.
Okay. The last principle is act regionally. And so this is, again, opportunistic. When opportunities arise, to act regionally, whether that is, and that could be from policy conversations, you know, the mayor's involved in many of these, as are maybe others at this table. But policy conversations and discussions around the issue, certainly that's important. There may also be other, more formal kinds of agreements to enter into, for instance. I'm not sure we have great examples here, but there are, you know, others around the country. It may be that, you know, those kinds of partnerships and agreements about commitments to affordable housing, when those opportunities arise, if they arise, that's something that we would advise the city to get excited about. Go ahead.
So the one thing that I, that I wanted to point out, and it's really under your recommended policies slide, but I was going to see if it came up under recommended principles, is under incentives conditioned on inclusionary outcomes, in the draft document, you very clearly call out that partnership with Renewal Wheat Ridge is critical to this policy. Can you just go into that a little bit more, since you didn't touch on it just yet?
Yes. For example, there's, most market rate rental projects that have come online, and Wheat Ridge in the last few years, has some significant TIF assistance flowing into them. And we think certainly part of, part of the reason that TIF assistance, or any kind of public incentive goes into a project, is to help it break even and actually occur, because the city wants it to occur, and it might need a little bit of help. But we also think that there is an opportunity, given the strength of the residential market here in Wheat Ridge in recent years, that there may be an ability to absorb an inclusionary requirement. Again, we wrote what it, what we think that is in the document itself. We're not talking about something like 30% of all your units have to be affordable, and they've got to be affordable to 40% AMI households. We're talking about something that we are fairly certain can be absorbed in most developers' pro formas. So that's how we get to the, I think we put it 10% of units at about 80% AMI. We're fairly confident that that can be absorbed in most of these projects. We think that if, if the project is to happen, the folks who are developing that project are obviously going to, they wouldn't be doing it if there wasn't going to be a return to them. And that that's a, not an unreasonable ask for the kind of assistance that has been flowing via TIF in recent years.
Yeah, and maybe you'll talk about this as we get into take action, so just tell me if I'm getting ahead, but oftentimes what we see happen with some of the larger developments is that when they're in the pipeline, and there's a few of them in the pipeline, then they'll go and ask like, you know, water, sewer, electric, like, can you service this project? And at that point, yes. But then what happens is then you get down to the end, and it's kind of like last guy standing gets, is holding the bag for, now we need a new lift station, or, you know, we need to bring more new infrastructure in because these other two projects went on before you, or something like that. And so Renewal Wheat Ridge is, that's a place where they can assist in that, but I also know, because I'm on that board, that we're really looking more at like, but we want to see some more affordability in the project, if we're going to continue to assist in those ways.
Right. Right, and we think that that should be possible.
Eric, I have a question, since we brought up inclusionary policies. Do you know of any examples where they've got like a, you throughout the 10% is sort of readily absorbable by the market? And so if we adopted a policy around 10% affordability at 80% AMI, to throughout your example, do you know of any other, like, what I, what we have a lot of in the city, and I think a lot of as our larger land opportunities that we know of now that aren't being market forced by other policy changes, are smaller than that? I mean, we're seeing, you know, some of these, you know, smaller lots that are six, eight units.
Right.
Is there a complementary policy that if you don't have at least 10 units, that you've got, this is your in lieu of contribution? So that we're not just forcing the market into these little, or forcing them to build big, big, big units on the land, to get under that?
Well, I think, as we were looking at the idea of inclusionary, we thought about, okay, what happens if you just have a citywide inclusionary requirement? Doesn't matter what you build, or where you build it, anybody who's building residential anywhere has to, is subject to inclusionary requirements. And it quickly occurred to us that you get into so many edge cases. You know, it's like 1% of projects has this, 1% of projects has that, right? Because you get these different opportunities in Wheat Ridge, given your, it's not a monoculture, right? And so you have these different kinds of parcels and different kinds of locations. Some might want to do ownership, some might want to do rental. And we thought, wow, that's going to be really complex to figure that out. And all of a sudden, we're going to end up with not just one version of Rachel's question, but like a lot of versions of your question. And how would we deal with that? And so that's what forced, not forced us, but suggested to us that we should dial it back and think about, all right, what's the market been doing, I don't want to say easily, but what's, what have developers wanted to do in Wheat Ridge, and why? And that suggested to us that the townhouse type that's largely been happening in MUN, that that was like a target of opportunity. That multi-unit rental that's been happening in the mixed-use districts, particularly mixed-use commercial, MUC, in charter, height, and density-accepted areas, that that was a target of opportunity. Because we looked at those projects and said, those are happening at some meaningful scale. We think we understand the economics of those projects sufficiently to figure out that they can probably give 10% at certain levels, and that those can be absorbed in those pro formas. And if we did that, and we simply sort of stuck to those two, and we'll talk a bit about what we call R4 in a few minutes as well, on the attached townhouse type, that if we were to be able to do that on, like an R, a new R4, MUN, and MUC, or other mixed-use districts, that we'd probably capture most of what is most easily capturable, when it comes to inclusionary. And then we sort of just said, let's not worry about the six-unit infill, the eight-unit infill, because you're looking at, you know, it's just more difficult to kind of figure out how that's going to work, you know what I mean? And that's, I'm not saying that's the way it has to be as you go forward, but I'm explaining our rationale, and how we got to that, and why we decided to not go in that direction, and rather to go to the more targeted approach.
Okay, thanks for that. And the reason I'm asking is, I'm just, I'm focused on like, how do we get money for the programs we want to run? And so if we were sort of bringing in that in lieu of for the non-qualifying projects, we'd be funding a fund that we could then do the things like our naturally-incurring affordable housing projects. That's, that's my interest. Not, not that 1,001% questions, but just, you know, is there a blunt, a blunt tool where we could maybe use that, that isn't, that isn't forcing the market?
It's one of the, was one of the leaders actually, in that, in assessing a fee as they build a house, based on the need for affordable housing, the need for people to take care of that house. It's a different community, make no mistake, but they did an assessment, and other communities have done that, that aren't in the Aspen League, right? And so it could be a kind of impact fee, the cost of living and doing business here, right? So you could do that until you get to maybe 10 units at that point, maybe you offer the inclusionary zoning 10%, or if there is a fee in lieu, maybe that, that still has an opportunity to live there. But you could combine.
So, and just real fast on the, like, the smaller, like, infill projects. Knowing that if we do things like allowing like townhouses instead of like two single-family homes being built on a lot, knowing that that automatically brings affordability back into the scope. Is there, I guess I didn't, I guess I didn't see, but maybe I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't looking at separating out larger projects and smaller projects when I was reading the document, but is there perhaps a strategy to encourage those smaller, those smaller infill developments to still bring, you know, affordability, some sort of attainability really, to, to the community?
Part of the challenge is that scale matters.
Yeah.
And so we looked at, because one of the tools that's in the, in the state bill is, you know, allowing duplexes, triplexes by right. And we looked at that, and looked at the development economics of that, and said, okay, is this going to make, is this really going to make a difference on affordability? And given what it costs to build those units, our assessment was, you still, a duplex, let's say it's two units, they're ownership, they're probably still going to have to be pretty expensive. And so to get one of those to down to the level that might be affordable to, like, one of these households in our 100 to 150 range, this is going to have to get subsidized somehow, some way. And then how would you do that? Well, there's not a lot of cross-subsidy to be had, because you only have one other unit in the deal, right? As opposed to having 20 more, or if it's rental, you know, 120 more. So it's possible that those opportunities could have some affordability. You may have, there's certainly always opportunities to, for instance, buy down. But it just, it didn't seem like there would be enough of them, or that the economics of those projects in particular really lent themselves to it. That it was certainly not low-hanging fruit at all. I don't want to, I don't want anyone to misunderstand that actually doing what we're talking about in this document is easy by any stretch of the imagination, or that it's really low-hanging fruit. But it seemed more feasible, and something that the, would actually work with the way the market is working. And I think that the duplex example, the triplex example, the six-unit, the eight-unit, it just becomes trickier, because you just don't have enough units in that development to make that make sense. So I think, sorry, I would say that I think our understanding of the kinds of projects that we're thinking about imposing an inclusionary requirement on, likely have some minimum threshold for viability in terms of the number of units, whether it's rental, whether it's townhouse. And we didn't go so far as to sketch out what is an absolute minimum number below which it wouldn't apply, or above which it would apply. But that is probably something that, as implementation takes place, again, it's a calibration issue that we want to think through.
Councilor Ohm had a question, then I see Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mayor. So on part three, kind of talking about land utilization, my question is, in exception areas where we have removed the heightened density, should we consider assessing a fee if a building builds less floor than is allowed, and then use that money for affordable housing? Because we have some cases over by the TOD where the, you know, there's very few areas in Wheat Ridge where we, you can build that high, and instead what they've given us, they've given us a three-story, and we're, we just don't have that much land. And so what happens is, well, now you have, you've missed that opportunity for affordable housing.
That's a really, really interesting question. Taxing the underutilization of land is a, I think it would, certainly anybody who's thinking about that kind of puts you on the cutting edge of affordable housing thinking. There are a lot of reasons why, if it's applied broadly, it becomes certainly politically difficult. But in specific instances, like the one that you're talking about, where developers not going to want to build to the maximum right now, because of what the developer's going to say is, market conditions don't suggest to me that I can go as high as Scott would like me to go, build as densely as Scott would like me to build, right? I'm going to manage my risk, I'm going to build what I know I can sell, or lease up, or whatever. But I also wonder if there are enough of those kinds of places in Wheat Ridge that you'd want to do that? I don't know, it's a really interesting question. I think what you're going to see is, in the majority of the places where the type, that housing type makes sense, there's a maxing out that developers are going to try to accomplish. And in the places where they could go to, what's 90 feet, seven, seven stories? Is that six? There are a lot of reasons why it's, the more dense you go, the higher you go, it doesn't automatically make your costs lower, because you get into like, now I've got to go from wood to steel, now I need elevators, now I need structured parking, all these things. So it's a, it's a fantastic question, it's worth kicking around, I think. There are implications for making those decisions. I think that would be a future-oriented decision, because what it would mean is that, yeah, maybe someone's going to build less than they can, and if you have that fee, they'll readily pay it, don't know, haven't run those numbers. Or they just won't do it, and that site will be available at such a time as the market would, you know, dictate that that kind of thing could be built.
Because then what's also happening is, on the other hand, is we're having areas, say, where we have these maybe single-family residential, and now the developer wants to scrape some homes, and then put in a three-story townhome or something in that area, and those citizens are upset, and they're asking like, why, you know, we voted on removing heightened density, why aren't they building over in this area? And I can't answer that question, so.
There's, you know, there's other ways to tackle that. That's interesting, because there are some communities that have minimum heights, minimum builds, right, in certain areas. So if you know there's an area where you want taller buildings, the allowance of five, six, seven stories may not get you there, obviously, they might just build three. But you could do a minimum four, maximum seven, and force their hand into going higher, number one. You might get your percent of inclusionary zoning if you have that policy in place. The other thing you do is, to Eric's point, you force them to subdivide land in a different way, to think a little bit more efficiently about it, right? Rather than having to use a large parcel, and they say, I've got an acre of land, I can't build five stories over this entire acre. You're forcing them to chunk it up, which is actually potentially beneficial. It's giving you more mixed uses, mixed buildings on that site. So minimum builds, minimum heights, are probably an easy code way to start to get there, without playing the tax game, which is also fascinating. Although taxing land that is underutilized has been discussed in many places, so you're on trend.
Councilor Weaver.
Thank you so much. Always learn a lot when you all are here. I know that we have limited space, and I just want to, I just want to take a turn from new builds for a second, because I think that's super important.
because I think that's super important. I, I feel like I want to go back to this conversation of the duplex because we have a lot in Wheat Ridge of aging nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties duplexes. And I feel like there's an opportunity there that, that while I realize building a duplex doesn't necessarily make sense, I feel like those current duplexes that are being rented, or maybe they're being owned by one side and rented to the other. But, but somehow creating incentives for, in the same way we're looking at the larger rental areas, like some of the apartment blocks and things that we have, I feel like we, Wheat Ridge has a lot of these old duplexes. And I, and I feel like there's an opportunity there rather than necessarily saying, well, yeah, we could take those down and we could build four, you know, on that same lot. And yes, they would probably be spacious and, and safer and all the things. But, but I'm wondering if there's anything we can, if, if there's an opportunity in the, the single duplex owner, because those spaces are, you know, they're fifteen hundred square feet and they're, they have yards. And they, and they're sort of all the things that a lot of our residents really resonate about Wheat Ridge. And I, and I feel like it's sort of this silent renter group that we're not talking about, if that makes sense? Because we talk about renters as in, and I, and I think we all do this, but I know I do this is I, I put them in large buildings, a hundred units or whatever, or fifty units. And, and I was just kind of curious if you could speak to if there's a way, because I think of entire swaths of Wheat Ridge that are blocks and blocks that I've walked of all sort of nineteen sixties duplexes, you know, north of forty-fourth, north of thirty-second, of thirty-eighth, where, near where I live. And, and I, is, is there an opportunity in this, in, in dealing with a duplex owner? Or a person who might own two or three? Could you just talk about that and sort of what we could do as a city? Because I also think that might raise the voices of those renters because I, I think there are a lot of our residents who are renters and people don't realize they're renters, if that makes sense.
Right, right. Yeah, and I appreciate the segue to existing units because certainly while there's, we think are these really cool opportunities in, in new builds, whether it's the rental complexes or whether it's attached townhouses, what we think is really almost more exciting is all this housing stocks you already have here in Wheat Ridge. And the naturally occurring affordable housing, which is not designated officially affordable by anybody. It is just owned by a lot of generally kind of people who don't own a whole lot of rental. You may have some people who are in it, you know, from a business perspective and they own fifty, a hundred units, but probably there's a lot of people, they own a couple or even just one. And realistically speaking, in Wheat Ridge, probably ninety to ninety-five percent of the housing units you have now are the ones you're going to always have, right? You're just, your new builds are not going to be near, it's going to be a drop in the bucket compared to what you already have. And you're right, a lot of these are going to be, if you actually go find out what they're renting for, they're going to be relatively affordable compared to a lot of other options, certainly compared to what's new. Many of them will be, you know, sort of sized more generously. And we think that those are great opportunities. So for instance, if you had, just take a person who owns one or, excuse me, who like lives on one side and rents the other side. Okay, it's the classic example. But they, it's, it's hard. I mean, that's, that's a lot of kind of property for somebody to manage and own. The rents that they've been charging over time and that they're charging now may not be sufficient to really put the capital investment back into that, those units that they need and, or to maintain that property. And so that's a great opportunity to go to that kind of owner and say, you know, you've got an affordable rental here that's benefiting a renter household now, is benefiting our community. We've said this is important to us in this document. And if you will accept our help to upgrade that rental unit and you will keep the rents where they are for X number of years, that's a win-win all around because the property's getting investment, it makes financial sense for the owner, it's remaining affordable for the renter, right? And so that's basically what I just described. It could be for a duplex, it could be for a twenty unit or fifty unit property, it doesn't really matter. The same concept applies. And the action items, the NOAA preservation program, it's exactly what that is.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I, I just feel like this is something that's really important because I'm, I'm watching all of these duplexes around me. Literally, the one right by Louise Turner Park, I think changed ownership and literally they raised their, their rents a thousand dollars. And many of those people sort of went out to the community to find other rental spaces because, you know, I ended up talking to several of them. And, and it seems like that's something we could do right now to sort of stop this ripple of, of rent hikes for inappropriate places, if that makes sense. I, I, I feel like some of the older stuff is coming up higher because we have, does that make any sense? Like all they did was they repainted them and, and new appliances in them and.
It also depends what they paid for it. And so all those people, so if I'm the, if I'm the duplex owner and Lauren's my tenant and I say, you know, Lauren's great, but I need to sell this place and get out of here. And I want to get as much as I can. I'm not really concerned is Lauren's rent going to go up next year? I'm going to say, what's the most I can get? And then Thomas comes in and buys it and based on what he had to pay me, that helps determine what Lauren's rent is, right? And so long as he thinks he can get a thousand, based on what he paid me, right? Which is certainly more than I ever paid for it, right? So I've cashed out, I've taken that, that's equity to me. He's now got to service his mortgage and he's got to charge Lauren something else to help make that happen. And so long as he thinks that whatever his, his proposed rent is, can be absorbed in the marketplace, by which I mean Lauren doesn't want to pay the thousand dollars, but Jeff certainly will, no problem, right? There's a long line of renters in the Denver metro area who would love to have that place for only a thousand dollars more per month. It all makes sense. And you're right, so Lauren then is the person who is out in the cold in that situation. And if instead of me selling to Thomas so that I can go to Florida, the city came to me and said, would you consider taking our loan convertible to a grant premised on keeping the rents affordable for Lauren? I would say, seems to make sense to me. I get a better place. And I don't have, you know, I feel like I'm not stuck between, I can't afford to fix it, right? Unless I, right, I can either leave or I can fix it and I can't afford it. So those are my two choices. I can keep a, a, a property that's falling apart or I can leave. And in the process of me having to make that decision, the tenant is the person who kind of loses out. It's the subsidy that would come from the public sector that would help resolve that dilemma.
And that's kind of time dependent, right? I mean, that, that is something that, it seems like we've got a window before this domino effect of resell, this reselling that, that you just described. Or am I perceiving, or am I feeling like that's?
No, really, you, you're on the right track. And really what you're trying to do is, and it's interesting because we, I haven't looked at all the recent sales data lately. Don't know exactly what's going to become of the, of the market. I think we can probably all just accept in the long term, that sort of the trajectory of the Denver metro area continues to strengthen. But it may be that we're in a new time now where everyone's kind of taking stock and, and things are resetting a little bit. Maybe there's a bit of a slowdown in that trajectory. Honestly, I don't know. I think anybody who tells you that they know, I wouldn't listen to them. And there's your housing expert for you. So it may be that we're in a little lull here or, even if we're not, there's no time like the present, right? It's like that whole thing about when's the best time to plant a tree? That's kind of where we are now. And what you're really trying to fight against is the overall increase in demand to be here and the increase in land values. So as land values become more expensive, the pressure to redevelop properties is going to be higher, right? So the more valuable the land becomes, the more the pressure is going to be felt on people who own and who are going to be selling out and who are going to be buying to scrape that nineteen sixties duplex and build something else. This is a, this kind of program that we're talking about would be something that would sort of help arrest that. You're never going to do it citywide, but if you can impact fifty, a hundred, over time, five hundred, a thousand units through this method, then you've done something pretty extraordinary. It does take resources. Yeah. I think Judy had a question.
I've got a question for Counselor Hulteen and then I've got Counselor Hutchinson. And we, we haven't gotten quite through half of Eric's slides yet, so.
But we're going to cover it before we cover it.
Right. Thanks. So to Counselor Oma's questions about like, how are we, you know, you know, requiring or creating pressure for maximizing height? To me, it seems like it's, it's really like density minimums. And, and so for anything that like is seeking out a PUD or over a certain size to require a density minimum, and if they don't want to meet that, then they can opt out through an in lieu, in lieu of fee. Like to me, to me, it's like maximizing our densities. And then that allows them some creativity if it's a big enough site and they want to do, as you were sort of talking about, like subdividing the land a little bit and doing something that has a little bit more height and is smaller, you know, smaller on this side of a site. And then doing like, you know, some duplexes over here, sort of mixing it up. But yeah, I would, you know, I'm on a statewide think tank around housing and land use right now and that density minimum, especially around transit corridors, is, you know, incredibly like provocative for, for solving a lot of problems, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you. Not all the houses that are in the sixties or fifties are falling apart. So they were made very well. So that's why they're still standing, you know? But also for the city to get involved in giving a grant or something to an owner, it could be just a single house that's a rental also, not have to be a duplex or whatever. I don't understand how that would work to get the owner to update, put in granite countertops or whatever. What would the city do then? Put a lien on the property? Bingo.
Yeah, so there's, however that would take shape, and this is not a novel idea. These programs exist in a lot of places. But there's a contractual agreement and so that it's enforceable. So for instance, if I were that duplex owner and the city did give me twenty-five thousand dollars to upgrade the unit that Lauren is living in, and I said, well, I'm going to just, they told me I can't raise the rent, but I'm going to. I can't because then I'm trigger all kinds of like repayment requirements and all kinds of problems for myself. So yes, you have to have legal mechanisms that make it enforceable.
So, and it's just not how much the rent is. There's other factors, eh? There is the property taxes that are going up all the time. They're not going down. They're going up. So the owner has to get a little bit of money for that. Maybe they pave water, sewer, trash. Those things are going up, okay? Those are factors. It's not just that somebody is, you know, says, okay, here's the place, it's a thousand dollars. Seriously, you've got maintenance, other things that come into it. So what I see, when I see, you know, you give the example of how many units can be per acre on here, definitely the least amount of money is when you are doing more units. And how many places in Wheat Ridge really have one acre to where you could just do like, I don't know, five, six stories or something like that in a neighborhood? I mean, I see it on like the main areas, like thirty-eight, forty-fourth. Well, forty-fourth is going to get all redone and things like that, also by the light rail. But to put something like this, which would be more economical to build and all that because of the price of land, the more units you build is better for the buck. And aren't there like other cities that have already confronted developers that when they build, that they need to, you know, a certain percentage of what you build needs to be affordable? I mean, this is coming up. Is, is that like Denver or other places that are doing that? So this isn't new. So why don't we see what they're doing, how they're doing it? Instead of rewriting, you know, everything?
I think, I think we might be doing that.
Yes, and.
I think these, I think most of these ideas are, are sort of common threads that happen throughout the country.
And you're right, that, so the very, when you can build more units per acre, you do make more money, generally, generally speaking. And so that's why we think that that's part of this gives and gets. So if the city creates a, a development environment where you can build more densely and you can make more money in your project, that there should be a community benefit that comes back for that, absolutely. And I also appreciate your point about costs that go up, whether it's maintenance, whether it's taxes or, or utilities. So for instance, if you were that rental owner and you were in this hypothetical program that the city could potentially pursue, there could be something like an allowed annual escalator. You know, an affordable rent could go up a certain amount per year to account for, you know, whether it's one percent or three percent, so that it could account for those things. But it wouldn't be the example of, you know, a thousand dollars from one, one lease year to the next lease year. Does that make sense? But that could be built into it, a small escalator. Sure, they would all align, yeah. The lease, the program requirements, all that stuff, yeah. Good, sure. We're not far off, Mayor, I can assure you. We're doing fine.
Okay.
Anything else before I move on?
It's good.
Okay. All right, back to the slides. In the document, we have basically identified these, what we think are the, are four key affordable housing opportunities. We've talked about nearly all of them already. The first one is to build more multi-unit rental because that's a type that is working in your marketplace and from which we believe we can extract some inclusionary units. Same thing on attached ownership units. So the success of the MUN, Mixed Use Neighborhood District in facilitating townhouse development in Wheat Ridge in the last five or so years, we think proves that. We think there's also, again, at a higher income level than rental, but we think that there's an opportunity to extract a bit of inclusionary there as well. The third is to preserve and upgrade existing affordable units. We've talked about that. And the fourth is to maximize potential for, for the Lutheran Legacy Campus redevelopment as that comes together. So those are the four key opportunities. And we have then set up this series of action items that are prioritized, priority level one through three, to take advantage of those opportunities. So that's the structure of this document. And we can certainly talk through each one of these a little bit. I don't want to go into super amounts of detail, so I'll kind of just do an overview. There's obviously a lot more information in the document for those who want to read that detail. But our first priority is to revise the zoning scheme for community benefit. The second is what we're calling the Wheat Ridge Housing Fund. Third is Housing Supportive Code Amendments. The fourth is Continued Lutheran Implementation Efforts. I think what I'm going to do now is just say a little bit about each one of these and then we'll go to the next priority level and then the next priority level. So we've talked a little bit tonight about this idea of imposing inclusionary requirements on mixed use districts, whether it's MUC, where we've seen a lot of rental development, whether it's MUN, where we've seen a lot of townhouse development. Something that the city's not seen as much of, our understanding is the city has not seen as much true mixed use development in its mixed use districts as it would have thought when those districts were, were put into place. So those districts were fantastic and did a really great job of facilitating a lot of market rate residential development, not exclusively, but certainly a lot of it. And again, less mixed use. So whether that is more commercially oriented projects or residential projects with a true sort of mixed use component. And we think that there's an opportunity to kind of get two birds with one stone here in, in looking at that zoning scheme. And one is to think about the mixed use districts, yes, as mixed use, but really about community benefit. So we have mixed use districts. We haven't been getting mixed use in the way that we thought. So strengthening those provisions so that we actually have to get what we thought we were going to get and/or we can get affordable, inclusive affordability. So in other words, if Thomas is a developer and he's got a site in an MUN district and as of right now, he's most likely going to say, how do I fit as many townhouses on this site as I possibly can? And that's going to be okay under the current regulations? We might say, you know what, Mr. Eddington, that's not actually what we're after. What we're actually after is, we want mixed use the way we said we wanted mixed use. And if you don't want to give us mixed use, then you're going to have to give us affordability. You can choose both if you're, if you're altruistic, but you have. You can choose both if you're, if you're altruistic, but you have to choose one. You can't choose the old route of just townhouses, straight town, market-rate townhouses. We think the market has found this tool to be very attractive in Wheat Ridge. We think the mixed-use districts overall have been found to be very attractive in Wheat Ridge. And we think that, again, these projects can give community benefit in a way that they've not been giving so far. So, Mr. Mayor.
And so, what other, I mean, when you say mixed-use, I'm sort of thinking, well, I'm going to have, I'm going to have retail on the first floor, and I'm going to have some residential up above. And we haven't gotten that.
Correct.
And, and why haven't we gotten that?
Lauren, do you want to speak to that a little?
I mean, I don't know if I can answer that question exactly, but the, we haven't gotten it because I think the market for townhome development is easier and stronger. And frankly, the market wasn't strong enough 20 years ago to attract any development in Wheat Ridge. The purpose of mixed-use zoning did what we wanted. It attracted development. And now that we're getting it, we can get more of what we want as a community, be it sales tax revenue, mixed-use development, or inclusionary. So, this is, mixed-use zoning's not broken. It did what it was intended to do, incentivize people to look at Wheat Ridge and want to spend money in our properties. And what we now want to say is, we're ready to raise the bar a little further and have a little bit more community benefit from the development. So, vertical mixed-use, it wouldn't necessarily have to be that. It could be a commercial building next to townhome buildings. We wouldn't want to prescribe that specifically. But the townhome market has been so attractive, it's just precluded those other types of developments.
But the value of our product in the city, our, our city, is more valuable now.
Yes.
So that we're able to increase the quality or the diversity.
Yes.
Either in, either in mixing real commercial with residential, or in, in providing an affordable component.
Right.
If we're going to stay in the residential care.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, and one thing that I'd like to point out is, we do have one project that is a townhouse project that has some mixed-use in it, and that's the one on 38th Avenue where I-P-A is.
Nick.
They, because they, they bought that whole property. They're maintaining that commercial piece there, and then doing the townhouses around it. But, you know, and, and one thing, as we talk about townhouses, that, you know, when I saw a townhouse in here, I wrote, my note was gut check, because we've seen a lot of really great townhouse projects get voted down on the dais. And so, this is really, if we want to bring affordability and attainability into our community, then townhouse needs to stop being a dirty word.
I think across the street from there, at the, next to Christopher House, is also a, a true mixed-use with a commercial component.
Just a quick point, you know, we're talking, we talk houses and townhouses, but the, like the stepsister, our condos, and in some of your data, you were talking about how like just threadbare the condo sales are. And it's because we don't have them in the city. I mean, we, we have townhouses, and we have houses, and we have apartments, but we really don't have very many condos.
You have some, you have some.
We have some, but they're a teeny part of our market share. And I just want to call out, like, I mean, I would love to see some condo development come out of this. This is.
We all would.
Yeah, I know. I mean, it's, it is kind of, it is, it's, I mean, I, I'm able to own my house because I bought a condo at some point. And so, so I just want to put that on the table as something to be mindful of as we're looking at the suite of tools and things we're trying to accomplish. Condos are actually a really great way to start to develop actual, like, real estate equity. So, if we can get some condos built in some.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. The developers quit building condos. Yeah, like, you know, 15 years ago. So, are, are they starting to build them again, or what do you see out there?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the.
That's the number we got, 25 a door.
Yeah. It's difficult, given the construction defect stuff in Colorado, it's, it's difficult, you know, some, it's not, like, it's not happening anywhere. But if you are, you've got to think about, if you're a developer managing risk, right? And what's, if there's a easier, better, safer way to make your money, you'd rather do that.
Is there a way to convert apartment, oh, sorry. You're good. I was just going to ask, is there a way to convert apartment, existing apartment complexes into condos? Like, is that a strategy that we could look at to kind of build the, the equity pipeline?
Counselor Hutchinson, I mean, you know, I think that one of the, one of the problems with that is sort of, you, you sort of fall back into the, into the litigation trap, you know, that you have, the common interest of being able to aggregate. Let me go to Counselor Hutchinson, and then Counselor Oms.
So, the question about the townhomes, and especially like the ones right there by Christopher House, eh? And they are going to have commercial in front. But we weren't going to do slot homes, right? Weren't we? Not? Is that what those are?
Miss McLaughlin the other day, she's got an answer.
If those townhomes in that design were at the street, they would not be allowed. But the site design as a whole with the commercial building in front of it.
So, it's hiding.
It's hiding. Yeah, but, I mean, the purpose of our code amendment a couple of years ago now was to regulate the design of townhomes and how they oriented to the street. So, for these rear-facing buildings, they have different rules that apply. Yeah.
Counselor Oms.
Thank you, Mayor. It seems to be pretty common practice when you write contracts that you specifically state if it's going to be condo or not. And, you know, if a project is always going to be apartments, you know, for someone to somehow convert that, sometimes my understanding is that the building construction may not be what is needed for the condo. But the consultants working on it are usually aware that if it's going to be something that's going to be slated for condo or if it's apartments because of the liability, and the liability is usually because there's no, you're dealing with not with just one litigant, but you're dealing with hundreds of litigants in order to try to, try to correct something. And, and that's a, it's a big issue that needs to get solved for the state and the city to, to be able to do that. But I would, I'd welcome more conversation, but probably not for tonight.
Yeah. Okay, Counselor Weaver, and then I've got Counselor Nosler back up next.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I missed something. But what is the, the litigation issue with condos? What happened 15 years ago?
They're able to, and I'm not going to get the word.
Construction defects.
Construction defects and, and be able to gather a class. And, and so, because you've, they're able to gather a class because all of these units were built the same. And so, if you, if you discover a defect in one of them, then a priori, you have a defect in all of them. So, you sue the developer and the builders and everybody.
There's been some bad examples, unfortunately, in the metro area that caused this.
And some bad, you know, and some bad claims.
Yeah.
Counselor Nosler, back. They tell me you have your hand up.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Lauren for that clarity on the mixed-use and kind of giving some of the, the history of how that zoning works, you know, that it, it can be malleable and you can step up the bar. And I, I do think it's interesting, the condos piece, just from some of the work that I've done in, in state-level policy, I'm, I'm really familiar with a lot of that knot that we would have to untie with some of the condo pieces. But is it possible with the mixed-use where, where we could put, start to consider maybe like condos instead of, you know, apartments or something like that in mixed-use, and have some kind of incentive there?
Yeah, so the, the zoning allows it. It's just, the question would be, I'm not sure whether there's an incentive that anyone's discovered yet in Colorado that would overcome the insurance risk. So, it is permitted now. We've actually pre-upped with a company that wants to do co-op, which is a little bit different than a condo, but trying to get creative. So, it is permitted. It's really just these other market conditions that are preventing it from coming to fruition.
Eric? The last piece of the, of the revised zoning scheme, and I want to say before we move on to this piece of it, we, unless and until conditions change where it's less attractive to build residential and more attractive to build office, commercial, or something else that would constitute mixed-use, we think you stand a fairly decent chance of, if you don't get the mixed-use, getting the affordable. Because residential's still going to be attractive, still want to build residential, still where there's a lot of money to be made, generally speaking. And so, that, that inclusionary affordable option may be a very attractive option, as opposed to providing the mixed-use. So, just wanted to put that on the table. And the last piece of this is, we, we don't think townhouse is a dirty word, certainly. And we think that as MUN has sort of become the default townhouse district, we think there actually probably should be a townhouse district. And that, again, given the success of the type, given the development economics, that there should, there's an ability to capture some, some inclusionary there. And so, in your existing zoning scheme, you have an R1, and R2, and R3, and so, we're sort of calling this an R, call it whatever you want. But R4 sort of becomes the, the next thing to have. And we think that an R4 district that could become the townhouse, the real townhouse district is something that the city should look at as well. And that, by the way, doesn't preclude something that's not a townhouse, doesn't preclude something that is a different type. But I think, given what we know about market conditions, that's the most dense type that would sort of, could, is likely to be built under that kind of scheme. So, again, with inclusionary requirements. The other, next thing in the first priority level is Wheat Ridge Housing Fund. It's a dedicated vehicle for collection and distribution of affordable housing funds. So, it's, it's not that, there can't be other, I'm not a finance person or a municipal accountant, so I'm not going to pretend to, to know all the different ways you can collect and, and hold money here at City Hall. Patrick, I'm sure could spend hours talking to you about that, probably actually has in recent months. But essentially, what we're thinking of is a fund that would be, into which different sources of revenues would flow, that could be things like future impact fee, if that becomes appropriate, any potential, if there's such a thing as an inclusionary fee in lieu, that kind of thing in the future, lodging tax, short-term rental revenue, those kinds of things, that could, one-time monies, leftover ARPA funds, you know, what have you, could be a variety of things, kind of, it both matters and doesn't matter. But that that fund would be the place that specifically pays for affordable housing activities from the city of Wheat Ridge in the city of Wheat Ridge. And there are different ways to think about doing that. It could be an opportunistic grant fund. It could be an incentive fund. It could be, there are places that do annual funding rounds. So, for instance, you could say, you know, this year, the City of Wheat Ridge Housing Fund is opening its application round, and these are the kinds of projects that we're looking to fund. And the private sector or the nonprofit sector can bring its proposals to the city, and, you know, based on a criteria, a ranking system, we decide which projects we're going to fund, you know? So, you could do it a variety of different ways. But that's the thing, is to have a really, a dedicated vehicle for affordable housing activities here. The next thing is Housing Supportive Code Amendments. There are a variety of, I won't say they're all small, but they're on the smaller side of things that can be adjusted inside the city's code, process items, certain fees, parking minimums requirements, something that we, is called no net loss. So, the application in specific circumstances of not reducing the number of housing units in a, in a development project. So, again, there's more information about that in the report. And then the last, maybe it's counterintuitive that it's a high-priority item, to continue the Lutheran implementation efforts, because the Lutheran project will happen on its own timeline, and it may not be as urgent as some other things in this list. But the point of putting it in the first priority level is really sort of keep it top of mind, and really to be setting expectations with Lutheran and publicly about, again, not necessarily prescribing, because it seems that's, may not be appropriate in any case, but it also may be early. But rather, just to continue to set expectations, continue to go through those conversations and those planning efforts as needed, to make sure that when the day arrives, on the assumption that the day is arriving at some point in the next few years, that the city will be ready to, to engage in that. The second priority level, we have housing staff. The reality is, whether it's the NOA preservation, whether it is some, somebody, somewhere, somehow, some way, as we envision, producing affordable units with a compliance requirement. So, for instance, if we, if Thomas builds something in, in MUC or a future R4, and he's got an affordability requirement, and he provides the units, we have to make sure that he's actually charging the rents that are right, you know, for instance. And so, who's going to track that? You've got to have someone to do that work. And as that happens across, if we're successful, ideally, you know, a lot of units, that all comes with this administrative burden. So, you've got to have sort of people to work on that. So, not a top priority item, but certainly something that is important as you look at the portfolio of activities that are going to be undertaken in the future. The next one in the second priority level is the comprehensive plan. That's going to be really important. I'm sure you'll be having more conversations about that as 2023 goes on. But there are some, some big questions. This document itself raises some big questions about the future of land use in Wheat Ridge, about the, the role of the charter in governing height and density, about the kinds of housing that we're interested in having more of in Wheat Ridge or less of, and in what kinds of locations in the city. And those are comp plan questions, as well as really testing and vetting what we all think is a strong commitment to affordable housing. But the comp plan is a great place to, to really test that and reaffirm that commitment. The Naturally Occurring Affordable Housing Preservation Program, we've talked about that, I think, at length already. And then in our third priority level, things that are not necessarily right in front of us, but will be a few years out, is to update the development code in the zoning map. Again, that follows on all the things we just talked about and what the big questions are in a comprehensive plan, and what the comprehensive plan decides about those things will drive what the development code looks like in the future and what the zoning map looks like in the future. We think it, again, if the comprehensive plan process suggests that this is a conversation the community ought to have, to explore the role of the charter in governing height and density in the city. We're not outright saying you need to have more height and density. What we are saying is, if you want more projects of the type that we believe can provide you affordable mixed-income outcomes, and you, you want more of them, and you want them in more places in the city, then that's something that's going to have to be looked at. And we would, again, would never suggest that you do that before you've done the comprehensive plan, because that's the big community conversation. And then finally, sort of pro forma is, you know, in about five years, do this again, because conditions are going to change, Wheat Ridge is going to change, politics are going to change, development conditions are going to change. And what is true today is, we don't know what it'll be in five years, but it probably won't be the same as it is now. So, you want to check back on this again. Oh, I should have been running through the slides. Anyway, and this is organized in a bit of a timeline. This is all flexible. This is subject to events happening on the ground. This is subject to city work planning and all that. But a rough approximation of when we think these things are achievable, based on kind of what we know is coming up in the next few years, what staffing levels look like, et cetera. So, this is certainly subject to some adjustment. I would think of this as conceptual at this point. In terms of next steps, based on the conversations that we've had here tonight, we'll make some refinements as needed. I believe there will be an adoption conversation at a business meeting in early 2023. I don't think that's scheduled yet, as far as I know. And then there will be some additional efforts to share what's in this document with the public. We've had some conversations about recording some, some quick videos or webinar-type things that would be easy for people to consume, and get this in small bites. We've talked about holding office, online office hours, so we can schedule those, and people who have questions or want to know more, or want to provide feedback can, can attend those. I'm sure staff will have more to say about that as we firm those things up. And that really brings us to the end of what we have to talk about, in terms of what's in the report and what's on the slides, and just return now to the questions to, to make sure that we feel like we've answered these to the best of our ability.
Counselor Hoppy?
All right, thank you. So, I went to, in San Antonio, I went with the Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation to a peer community leadership exchange. And San Antonio's done a lot of, a lot of really good work around affordable housing. Some things that they have in San Antonio is, it's almost as big as Jefferson County. So, things that we don't necessarily have at Wheat Ridge. They have land, they have money, they have a funding mechanism, and they have a, like a, a 10-year outlook for that funding mechanism. And they have one elected body that is driven to get there. But some of the things that they did are things that we could potentially implement. And, and they have, they have a housing authority, which we have an inactive housing authority, and I didn't really see anything addressing the housing authority in the plan. And, and they have. anything addressing the housing authority in the plan. And, and they have kind of like what, what we, what we started nicknaming the easy button, and like the staples, that's easy. They have a liaison that works very specifically just with affordable housing. Now, I did see that addressed in this plan as neighborhood and housing services. And that was one, one thing that we could bring back. And then they went through all of their plans, all of their documents. And anytime that one of their guiding documents talked about housing, they brought it together in a summary to make sure, like, okay, it's talking about housing in the 44th Avenue SubArea Planner, you know, and made sure that all of that then came and tied back into their housing strategy plan. And I didn't really see any kind of conversation around that, that activity happening. So my question is, with the, with, with the, the staff, right, the neighborhood and housing services, how would that necessarily, like, they have a chief housing officer in nine departments and 100 people, which we will never have. But how does that relate to, like, our neighborhood, like, to neighborhood planning with your department, Jeff? And, and do you feel like that would be something that your department would do, things like, make sure that all documents talk about housing are, are relating back into our housing strategy, and activating our housing authority and like that kind of stuff? Like, how, how does that really relate to your, your department? Or Lauren?
So we don't have a housing expert on staff. I tried to wear that hat for a couple of years as the liaison to the housing authority, but that's not my job, which is why we wanted to make sure that that's included in here, because a lot of the longer-term programs require that. As for the housing authority, the, our current housing authority is not equipped to be a traditional housing authority. It was never conceived that way. I mean, it's probably heard some of this background. The housing authority was created in 2001 for the specific purpose of receiving a grant that the city matched for a specific program, which was buying and investing in homes for income-qualified individuals to buy, at a time when the market allowed that to exist. We have, oh, since the 70s, Jefferson County Housing Authority, now Foothills Regional, has been our traditional housing authority. So we're not, we've never suggested that Wheat Ridge Housing Authority would duplicate those efforts. It's just not practical. And with all due respect to our board members on the housing authority, Council Weaver included, and our resident members, they too don't have that expertise. So I think on the upside, what they do currently do is have a minority membership in deed restricted affordable, where the NOAA program is very complimentary. So if you do fund a housing fund, and if we do find people who want to invest, and if we do want to help them offset their property tax liability, because it is deed restricted affordable, the housing authority is like really good at specific purposes, specific programs. So that's an opportunity. And when, if or when we get a housing expert on staff, we feel like we'd be even more equipped to say, okay, with that resource, how, how better can we resource the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority? You know, we can continue to have, to use Jeff and Ashley's Let's Talk program to understand sort of housing issues. Somebody earlier was talking about, and our document talks about the right program and the right, or the right project in the right place. And I think that local knowledge is helpful. But we, we, we definitely would need somebody on our team who has the expertise in housing that we don't have today.
Thank you. And, and sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
I was just going to add to, to your point about sort of San Antonio and the disparate policies all around and combining in one place. We're, in a good way, we're small enough to where we don't have to, we don't have as many dots to connect. But, but that also means we don't have any of these policies in place. Places like San Antonio, Arvada, Lakewood, Golden, Denver have all had housing-related policies in place for a long time. We simply don't have them. So this is a huge start, and I think the starting point for connecting those dots. And it's good now we're doing the 44th Avenue SubArea Plan and the comp plan, so it's all happening around the same time where we can, make sure to talk to each other. And also, just to the point of the housing staff person, Arvada, Golden, and certainly Lakewood and Denver, but all have, like, Arvada's got a housing, this kind of person is, has been hired within recent years, same thing for Golden. So we've got a bit of a precedent for what that position looks like, I think, for a city of our size.
Right. And then one thing that they also did is they codified the definition of affordable. And I didn't really see that, like, kind of in our action plan. And I, and I, I would have to go and, and just, and go do the research and look up how they did that. But I thought that was an interesting idea. They, they, not only do they codify the definition of affordable, but they started talking about affordable housing in the realm of it's as important as utilities, right? So affordable housing is a utility, like, they started bringing it into the conversation that way. And so I, I don't know if that's something we might want to look towards.
Thank you. Counselor Holtein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Hoppe. Those were, those were definitely excellent points. One thing I just really want to thank, thank you guys for that was way back in the early days, when I didn't know we were talking yet. You know, the, the guiding principles, I think, are super important. I read the document a couple of times in preparation for tonight. And, you know, as I, as an elected official, have been having this conversation with my constituents and other peers, like, the, the why, like, just the clarity about, like, the why, and like, the problem we're trying to solve, is, I know when we first started this conversation, we were really asking for that clarity. And so I appreciate that this document is bringing that forward, both in, like, the larger, and then in, like, the super granular scale also. So I just, thank you, C Z B, for always doing a good job with that. You're coming to us tonight with specific questions, and, so I will answer your actual questions. But, but before I do that, I just want to clarify. So what we're looking at is a document that's giving us recommendations on the direction to go. And a lot of the things that we've been talking about tonight are the policy conversations that are going to follow. So, so if we like the high-level guidance, if we agree that the, the three priorities, and then the recommendations within that, you know, then, then the work falls on us to do a lot of this more detailed policy work, like, what does that look like? How do we accomplish that? And so to that end, I just, I appreciate the, both the tools and the data you've given us, so that we can start those qualified conversations. Because, you know, I think the, the scenarios we've brought forward tonight help us understand how do these recommendations actually rubber hit the road here in our, in our charming little town that is apparently close to your heart still. So I just want to thank you for that. And I, so I'm, I like, I like the recommendations. I think the conversations we've had tonight around how are we really having a robust toolkit to actually, to support our existing affordable housing that we have, like, is a theme that's come through a lot. I, I do get excited about harnessing private investments that are already forthcoming, and that we can maybe pivot the market to make it more attractive. But I, I really feel strongly about, you know, we, we have, we do have some affordable housing, and we want to preserve it. We don't want to be displacing people. So, so strengthening those, and then looking for, how do we attract investment on our corridors, be that, that cross correlates with a lot of our existing plans that we have. And then the, the one thing that I just, that, that I've grappled with, like, right off the bat, and it still isn't clear to me, is I do feel like some of the priority one recommendations, to me, feel like a little bit of the, the cart before the horse on the comp plan. And I wonder if maybe, like, Lauren, you guys could speak to, like, if we're looking at doing some of the priority one recommendations that could feasibly be overlapping with while we're having comp plan update conversations, like, how do you think those things jive?
Sure. Did you have a specific priority one?
Well, like, you know, just things like talking about, like, bringing forward, like, an R fours zone, and like, some of, some of the things that are trying to be accomplished through those, seem like they'd be directives that would come out of the comp plan, but we also don't want to wait two years for the comp plan.
Right. Yeah, I think that's definitely true. I think there are certainly some low-hanging fruits when it comes to code amendments. Like, we still have a fee in lieu of Parkland dedication, we could waive for a deed restricted affordable, like, for example, if Foothills Regional Housing comes through. Parking minimums, I think those feel like the more sort of traditional code amendments that we're used to seeing. Certainly revising our zoning for this give-get, maybe creating the R four, is a little bit more of a leap of making a policy. I think it's our feeling that we want to capitalize on a market that's currently interested in Wheat Ridge. And we also think it could be that it's not expanding where developments are happening, which is probably the conversation in the comp plan, but it's expanding the benefit the community gets in areas where development is likely are going to happen, regardless of whether we have the good toolkit or not, right? When we go under a comp plan, it doesn't put a moratorium on development and development interest. So I think it's our feeling that we can refine mixed use, introduce this R four, which I think Jeff came up with this idea, the sort of the three-legged stool, playing the tapeboard, for example, on 44th, like you were talking about. So the 44th plan is very likely to come to you in a couple of weeks with a recommendation that says, townhome development on 44th is going to make a lot of sense between Kipling and Youngfield. So what are the options for that? Rezone to mixed-use neighborhood, a little disingenuous, not going to be mixed-use, default townhome district. Rezone to a planned development, because it's over one acre, very long, very risky, sort of unnecessary. Or what could be, rezone to R four, we know what we're going to get, developer knows what they're going to get, and we're going to get a little bit of a benefit out of it. So it's an interest that's going to be there before and during the comp plan, in a location that we would maybe already have a document that says townhomes are fine. And so in our minds, you know, we don't want to, we're not trying to rewrite mixed use, but are there some small retoolings that we could do between now and comp plan, in areas we already know will have that demand, that maybe we get a little more benefit from? At least worth the conversation, in our minds.
I was just going to add that we're, I think all of these tools can apply and be used actually under the existing comp plan, if you want to think about sort of that angle of it. So if we create an R four zone district, it's sort of a floating zone district. It's, we're not assigning it to any area. So it could be, a developer could come in and say, hey, I want to use this R four district. We'd still have to find compliance with the existing comp plan. The new comp plan would be more thoughtful and nuanced to where those types of things go. But it, it, so in that way, a lot of these things don't have to wait, if that makes sense.
That, that does, that, thank you for explaining that. Yeah, I think the, the more things that we can do, and I really like the iteration, like incremental progress is progress. And there's some big recommendations on the horizon that, that the comp plan can direct us towards. So these, these are very good and very exciting. So, thank you.
Counselor Om, did you have a comment there? And then I got Mayor Protim Stites.
Yeah, I just have a, a quick question. So kind of on the, on the townhomes, you mentioned that we're considering for townhomes that, or mixed use, sorry, mixed use, that they would have two doors essentially to go through. One would be an affordability or doing like a mixed, mixed use, where it has been zoned instead of traditional townhome. I'm in favor of that, but is there, is there a door number three? Can they still opt to say, you know what, I don't want to do one or two, I just want to do fees in lieu, and then we're kind of back to square one, which is what I see in, I, I won't name them, but some other municipalities of, they're constantly picking that door number three, and then the property values keep going up, and you've negated affordability.
Yes, so I think if I'm following your question correctly, you were in a, in a mixed-use district. You said, forget this conversation ever happened, all right, I want to be subject to the rules I was subject to in 2021, 22. Now you're giving me three doors, I've got to walk through one of those doors, and I don't like the mixed-use door, I don't like the affordable door. If there's a fee in lieu door, I want to do that. Is that what you?
Yeah, I just want to know, do we still have to give them door number three?
I, I think, we have to think about that a little bit. See, the thing about the R four district is, what's great about it is it doesn't exist today, right? And so if it doesn't exist today, it exists tomorrow, and Thomas wants to do that project, he comes in and says, I want R four, we say, great, here you go. And here's the conditions for, for R four. It's a slightly different situation from an existing established M U N district. And whether or not we can get away with offering, I guess we probably have to think through carefully how we would set that, how we would establish that set of requirements, how that would be set up. When you have an inclusionary requirement, you have to have an alternative means of compliance. These would be ownership, right? So an ownership and rental act a little bit differently. But it's a good question, and I would say, we maybe, as, before comes back for adoption, maybe something we can do a little bit more work on, just think that through a little bit more carefully, get you a more, you know, coherent answer. But it's a question worth asking, which is, do, it, to the extent that we don't have to offer them a cash in lieu option, can we just take it off the table and say, you have to give us one of the two things that we say we want? But I think that's, Scott, where you're going, right? Yeah, okay.
Because I, I understand from the state, from a state's perspective, you're right that right now with affordable, you have to either give them cash in lieu or affordable. You can't just say, you have to give us affordable.
Yeah, I would say from a, you know, in just weighing whether a cash in lieu or an impact fee makes sense, th- those are policy questions yet to have and to be calibrated. But in, at a high level, I think we think that, that's a win, right? Like, unless you said your policy goal is specifically to increase the number of affordable townhomes, which we haven't heard. We've heard, like, diversify and do good where we can do good for the households we can do good for. A cash in lieu option will go into a housing fund that does good somewhere else in the city. So it's all better where we, than we started, I think, in our minds. Like, there's a lot of detail and study to be done to make sure it has the outcome, and, you know, that we get that fund, or impact fee paid. But I think, I think that's still a win, different type of win, but definitely still a win.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess to answer your question, I, I agree with basically everything that you have laid out here. I, I haven't asked many questions tonight, because I, I got a lot out of the document, and then a lot of the questions have been asked have been really insightful. So I, I like the principles that you have set out, because they're flexible enough to give us some, you know, as things change over the next couple of years, we can, we can always kind of play with that. I, I like the R four idea, because I agree with Lauren. I think the, the M U districts, it's a little disingenuous when basically all we're doing is putting townhomes there. So, and I, and I don't know that that was the intent, but it is good that we're bringing in that business now. Now, we just need to start being a little more picky and choosy about how we, how we implement that. The housing fund, I think, to, something that Councilwoman Holtein has brought up several times, using our short-term rental fees and different things like that to help feed that, and the in lieu of, because there are places where, you know, they're building a housing development, certain places, it doesn't necessarily, an affordable housing unit or two in there isn't going to do any good, or, or it doesn't fit, I guess, maybe. And I think, you know, as, as we did the, the N R S and all that stuff, we, you know, we talked about that, is, is, you know, you look around, and one thing should kind of fit where it fits. And, and, and I think as our, our neighbors that came out for that, for the N R S, they really, they were, that was a big part of that, that document that, that was created, that, you know, as they look around their neighborhood, they want the neighborhood to kind of make sense. And so if you're, you're jamming townhomes in where houses are, and, you know, it doesn't always make sense. So that in lieu of fee, I think, makes a lot of sense. And I think Councilwoman Weaver and I really like the naturally occurring preservation program. I, I think that that's something, you know, the sooner we can get that going, the better, I think, because we do have a lot of naturally occurring housing in, in Wheat Ridge that, and I think too, from a community perspective, we've, we've seen this over and over, right? Every time a new housing development comes up, we get protests and petitions and blah, blah, blah. But if we can help reinvest into our community, and some of those landlords that have been here for years and years and years, and, and they look around, and they, and, because I heard this several times, is, well, you guys give the money to the new guy, but I'm sitting here, I've been here for 40 years, and, and I've been giving back to the community, but I can't fix up my units, and you guys keep giving them money. So, you know, if we can, if we can turn that around and, and help some of those landlords, you know, on 38th and in some of our neighborhoods, they can really help fix that up. I think our neighbors too would support that, because they look at some of those, those rental units that are slowly becoming dilapidated over and over again. I think about those, those eight-unit apartment buildings on 44th and, you know, off of 38th and different things like that, that, you know, it's not, it's not big, but if you can add, you know, just a little bit to, to upkeep and, and do that, I think that'd be good. As far as Lutheran goes, we're, we're still thinking different mixes, right? We're thinking, you know, some affordable, some a little bit more market rate, that sort of thing, right? Because, you know, we heard that over and over in that, in that conversation, is, you know, I don't want Section Eight housing going, you know, that sort of thing. And I'm not saying that some of that shouldn't maybe be there, but, you know, we're still looking at mixing that together, right? That's, that's kind of where we're at with that.
Right. There, there's nothing, I don't, I don't think there's anything in this strategy and action plan that should be in conflict with what's come out of the master planning process thus far for Lutheran. So it should all, again, if I, if I were the future developer of that site, I should be able to take that document, this document, and look at that and say, okay, I have a, you know, setting aside what might be in a regulation at some point, or a zoning requirement, I should have a pretty good sense of what the city is after here, what they're trying to accomplish. And those, there shouldn't, I think you'd have to look pretty hard, or be pretty imaginative. And those, there shouldn't, I think you have to look pretty hard or be pretty imaginative to say that this is telling me to do something different than this is telling me to do. And within all that, there should still be quite a bit of flexibility to, you know, plan that site creatively, I think.
Well, I think you guys have done a really good job, and I know working with you guys before on different projects, you know, you guys, you get the idea of like what Wheat Ridge is, and I think that this document kind of shows that too. And I would agree with everything, by the way, with what Councilman Hoppe brought into, from her trip to San Antonio. I think adding some of that stuff in, maybe codifying what affordable is and that sort of thing is probably a good idea. But I really appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
I'm going to mirror a lot of what has been said, and I do like the recommended policies and principles. And I also really like the idea of a townhouse zone. Is that, is that kind of what we're saying? Okay. And I, and I really appreciated your explanation of sort of that mixed-use isn't broken, it's been a tool, and now we're going to use it in a different way. So, thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you. So one quick thing, in the, in the tools, there was, one of the tools was allowing or better supporting the development of small square footage residential unit sizes. What is our minimum square footage currently?
For the actual unit? We don't, only the building code creates a minimum. The zoning code doesn't have a minimum.
But what is our building code minimum, then?
That I don't know.
Okay.
We adopted the tiny home appendix, so as small as a tiny home.
Okay, all right, super. And then the only other thing too is, on page 51, says, take necessary steps to establish a Wheat Ridge Housing Fund under the authority of City Council. So one thing I would like to see, if I could maybe get support for, is if we could add or designated agent in that, because if we do end up with housing staff and we do end up with like an actual housing authority that would do that, so I just wonder if we have, if I can have consensus to add that language. So it would read, take necessary steps to establish a Wheat Ridge Housing Fund under the authority of City Council or designated agent. Or council-designated agent.
I would, I would back you up on that. Is, would council still kind of have final say over that, or do you think like the housing authority?
I don't know that we, if we end up with, with a housing staff, right, and that's their, that's their profession and their expertise, and they end up with like a housing authority or something like that, I don't know that we necessarily need to also see that. But currently, it would go to City Council or designated agent. So I suppose if we didn't feel comfortable, it's not going to automatically go to any other agent unless we designate it.
City Council would have the...
So gives us the opportunity to designate it.
Yeah, and I mean, language as it is would give you that authority too.
It does.
Yeah.
Designating.
Yeah. Yeah, so City Council wouldn't decide to, we're going to give it to the housing authority, or I don't think you need to change it honestly.
Okay, super, great. Thanks for that. I do, I appreciate all the work and I look forward to, I would, I guess I would say this is not the first time that CZB has come to us and told us that we need to walk and chew gum at the same time. And we've done successful with that in the past. And so I look forward to starting on our priority ones and hopefully we will, hopefully we'll accept, we'll get consensus to move this forward tonight.
Councilor Nosler Beck.
I just, I didn't have anything to add. I just came on camera so that you could see I was nodding. I liked the additions that Councilor Hoppe threw out there.
Thank you. Eric, I just had a couple of things in connection with sort of the naturally, naturally occurring affordable housing. We have, it seems like quite a bit of that over in East Wheat Ridge where Judy and I live and Councilor Hoppe. And it was brought up to me when I was on council a number of years ago about maybe a historic overlay program or something like that where we, where we get a benefit and we're able to work with existing homeowners to help them rehabilitate their smaller homes and make them sort of a, you know, a cottage-type district out there so we don't lose kind of that history and that mix of housing and mix of architecture that we have that's really a key to the, part of the great things of being in Wheat Ridge is, you know, every, every house or every block sort of has different, different characters, so, so that. And then I had a question, you know, Proposition 123 has been passed and that's going to interject some, some state funds into affordable housing. How do you think we should look at that? How do you think that sort of plays into our plan? And is that something we need to watch out for or embrace, or, you know, how does that play into our planning going forward?
Obviously, I think that's something that any of us care about, affordable housing should be excited about. I'm not sure that it's fully clear yet exactly how all those funds are going to be spent or how they're going to be, how they're going to flow directly to the activities. My initial read is that much of it will be to providers, not necessarily directly to municipalities. And so, insofar as, I think your most appropriate and your most active local actor is Foothills, that probably, you know, watching, to the extent possible, playing a role in, participating in, being active in those conversations to what they're doing, what their, what their plans are, would be the best way to think about a big part of that. I think there may be, there's a piece of it that's for municipalities, it's for land purchases, if I'm not mistaken. Does that sound right?
Land banking is part of it, yeah.
Right. And there may be limited opportunities here in Wheat Ridge, but that's also something to keep your eye on. It's not really, we didn't do a lot of it, analysis of this, or talk about this in the document itself, but with land being so precious, being such a scarce resource, if there are opportunities for, and you never know, none of us ever know what the future holds, opportunities for municipal acquisition of land sometimes come out of nowhere, sometimes they never come about, but it's always something to be thinking about as well.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion before we move to our next agenda item? Okay, well, listen, thank you very much, Thomas and Eric, great to have you with us again. Great presentation, pretty, very interesting topic, and looking forward to continuing the discussion and moving to the next chapter.
Did we get an actual official consensus to move forward with that?
Well, okay. Raise your hand if you want to move forward with the action items as presented.
Looks like she popped back up again.
I don't want to lose our counselor online, but it looks...
Here she comes, here she comes. Yep, our hands up.
Okay, okay, so we have unanimity amongst those that were able to make it to us tonight. So we'll look forward to your final, final report.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, well, our next item of business is the staff reports.
We have nothing else this evening, Mayor.
Okay. We'll go to elected officials' reports and start with our clerk.
The clerk has nothing tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any, anything from the members? What's today? Today's the fifth. We have a regular, we have a regular, regular meeting here a week from now. Let's see, next Saturday, should be second Saturday, so I will be hosting coffee at Vanola's Italian Restaurant on 38th Avenue. Hope you can join us. Anything else from the members? Okay. Councilor Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. I got a call today from Alexis King, the DA for Jefferson and Gilpin Counties, and she just wanted to let council know and also anyone from the public that Pathways, their new diversion program, has an open house tomorrow from 4:00 PM to 6:00 at 405 Urban Street, Lakewood. So a great opportunity to check out this new program that's the first of its kind, I think, in Jeff Coe in Gilpin. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe.
I'm sorry, I know I had my turn. I forgot that tomorrow is Colorado Gives Day, and I would like to ask everybody to support any program that you like to support throughout the year because there are matching funds out there if you support through tomorrow through Colorado Gives Day. And if you don't have a favorite, feel free to support my favorite, which is the Porchlight Family Justice Center. Thank you.
Shameless plug there, but thank you for doing that. Okay. Any further business to come before the council? Okay, we will stand adjourned. Thank you. Drive home safely.